That hurts. I know. I'm calling the meeting to order. It's 2:01. Public comments? I know, but it says, oh. Roll call? Mrs.?
Mrs. Matoye.
Mostly here.
Ms. Flor.
Here.
Ms. Black.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Barto.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Now, are there any public comments? No public comments. So, okay, we are going to... We are going to recess our meeting into closed session. I did it lighter because we didn't have to have it. Good evening. Whoops. Good evening, everyone. Of course, our computers have gone dead. Welcome to our regular meeting. I'm calling it back to order again. And who's up? Who's on board? Okay, perfect. We will have a moment of reflection and the flag salute led by... Thank you. Yes. Caroline.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
All righty, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Yelsey, seconded by Mrs. Barto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we have approval of adoption of the minutes of October 7th and October 29th.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Black, seconded.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Barto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Both carries. Introduction of new staff.
Okay. Well, you'll notice that our HR department is a little short today. Leon is out on school business. But we do have the Honorable Dr. DiAgostino, who's going to introduce a new member of his team. Dr. DiAgostino.
Thank you very much, Dr. Navarro, President Matoye, this is floor members of the board. I'd like to ask at this time for Angela Allen Hess to please come up. Angela is the newest member to the Student Services Team. She's selected as our new Coordinator for Child Welfare and Attendance. She brings more than 27 years of experience in education to our team. Began her career as a secondary educator and served as the facilitator teacher of the California School Age Family Education Program, also known as CalSafe, in the Paramount Unified School District. Under her leadership, the program was designed as a model program for the state. And most recently, she served as the interim coordinator for student wellness, physical education, and student athletics in the Santa Ana Unified School District. We believe her experience with at-risk youth and her ability to connect students and families with community services makes her an excellent addition to our team. She'll be picking up foster youth, homeless services, SARB, SART, child welfare, welfare checks, working with our Child Welfare Attendance Investigator, and a whole host of other exciting duties. I couldn't be more excited to have her onboard. She comes with a wealth of experience. Angela Allen Hess.
Good evening, Dr. Navarro, President Matoye, Cabinet Members and Board Members. Thank you all for giving me this wonderful opportunity to address you tonight. I would also like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation and gratitude for selecting me as the Coordinator of Child Welfare and Attendance. It is such an honor to have been selected for this position, and I look forward to working with Newport Mesa Unified School District to support the needs of our students, family, and our district community. I believe my background in education and my experience in student support services will be an asset to your school district and its programs. I have spent the majority of my career working with at-risk students in the California School Age Family Education Program, specifically addressing the unique needs of teen parents, foster youth, and McKinney-Vento students. Under my guidance and leadership, as Dr. DiAgostino mentioned, that my program was recognized as a model program for the state of California. My work has given me the opportunity to address other significant issues such as graduation rates, absenteeism, and truancy rates. I hope to utilize my skills and experience to represent Newport Mesa Unified and ensure that we are meeting and exceeding all of our goals. Once again, I would like to express my appreciation and gratitude, and I'm excited to join the Newport Mesa family. Thank you.
Angela? Angela, did you bring any family or team support? Please introduce them to us.
This is my...
I know. Nobody told you that would happen.
This is my husband, Dr. John Hess, and my daughter, Skylar Hess.
Welcome.
Thank you. All righty. Okay. And, as you're all dying to have happen, community input. And I know we have some cards. Okay, only... Okay, these are on the non-agenda items. All righty. Let's start with Suzanne Gauntlet.
Good evening, Newport Mesa. My name is Suzanne Gauntlet. My daughter graduated from CDM this past June. During my 13 years of parental activities and advocacy in our school district, I had the opportunity to serve on numerous committees and panels, including the Calendar Committee. Back in May 2012, I was placed on the Calendar Committee because I was an incoming Harbor Council PTA President. At the time, my daughter was only in fifth grade. I, like so many other elementary school parents, I had no idea of what was in store for me and my daughter as she matriculated through middle school and high school and the importance of the collegiate calendar, which supports our students. And the issue has always been, since then, air conditioning in our schools and our classrooms. As of now, Newport Mesa is the only unified school district in Orange County that has not adopted a calendar that starts before Labor Day. So in the fall of 2017, the Calendar Committee convened. It consisted of 12 members from both unions, administrators, a former parent, and myself. Consensus from the Calendar Committee on the collegiate calendar was reached after five committee meetings, five community town halls, and a survey. The committee recommended that the 2021 school year should commence before Labor Day 2020. The transition at this time would be perfect since you would only lose one week of summer because Labor Day that year falls the second week of September. At that time, the Teachers Union President and Committee Member Britt Doughty gave a thumbs up with that placement of AC in the remaining schools. There was no longer any impediment to starting school before Labor Day. AC in our schools has been a priority in our district, and this summer will conclude six years of installation of AC programs in our classroom at an estimated cost of $75 million. I have been an enthusiastic supporter of our teacher and their union for many years. That is why I'm in total... At a total loss to understand knowing what the district's AC plan is and why all the information out there on our students and their mental health and well-being that the union would choose a negotiation strategy that hurts our students. Britt Doughty, just because it's time to negotiate the contract does not mean it's right to use a beneficial student calendar change as a bargaining chip. Such actions are deplorable and contrary to the union mission statements, which in part state, "You are champions of fairness for our students and committed to advancing these principles." Our kids are under incredible pressure from every direction. Well over a third of our students take AP and IB classes where summer work is mandatory. Over 90% of our students go on to community colleges and four-year universities. Those applying to college are applying at the hardest time in our nation's history. Orange County has some of the highest rates of student self-harm and suicide in the country. A month rarely goes by when we don't hear about a student's suicide. In these past few months, we have witnessed our kids engaging in more and more dangerous activity involving drugs and alcohol with tragic outcomes that are devastating in our communities. Teachers, you must rethink your position on the school calendar. We are all here for our kids. We must ensure that our current generation and all future generations of Newport Mesa students are not overly stressed as they are today. Students are not bargaining chips in contract negotiations. Do the right thing and agree to adopt the Calendar Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Allen, followed by Emily Valentine.
Good evening, School Board. I'm Kate Allen, and I'm a junior at Cronin Del Mar High School. And I'm also on the leadership team for the Youth and Government Program held at CDM. So, when planning our vision for the school year, one of the goals that we set was mainly to become more familiar with the local government, so specifically our School Board and City Council. I know that there's a lot more teenagers in the room than usual, and tonight, about 30 of us are in attendance here, and another 80 students are at the Newport Beach City Council meeting. So, for us, it's really nice that the meeting that we chose to come observe when planning our year this summer was... Would hold a great opportunity for us to share some thoughts concerning a topic that affects us as students immensely, which is the possibility of moving to a collegiate We are very aware that this is a complex issue, and we also understand that what is being discussed is no longer the benefits of a collegiate calendar, but the contractual technicalities by which it would be implemented. There's a... In other words, there's a lot that the adults have to figure out, but we are simply here to share the perspective of the student. There are some great resources on the NMUSD website outlining the benefits of this schedule. And our goal is to expand and give some context on those already presented points, as well as some other ideas that we've come up with. So I personally support the implementation of the collegiate schedule within the proposed timeframe for a variety of reasons, and I think that my thoughts also reflect those of my peers. From finals to midterms to state testing, fall sports, college internships and orientations, the timelines all really make sense to me. And all of these factors are those that affect students directly. So, as well as from the standpoint of culture and opportunity, and honestly, students' mental health, as the previous speaker stated. Therefore, we all thought it was super important that we shared our perspective. So Max and Emily will expand on these points, but we're really grateful to be here and to be included in the discussion. And hopefully, seeing a little bit of the student perspective is valuable to you and to all the decisions that you all get to make. So, thank you.
Thank you. Emily, followed by Max. Emily Valentine, there you are.
Hello. I am Emily Valentine, a sophomore at Cronin Del Mar. As a member of both CDM's Youth and Government Program, as well as the student body government, I believe that altering the calendar will have a positive impact on our school's culture. At a basic level, trying to match other districts and colleges reduces many current complications. Families trying to coordinate valuable time to spend together over vacation find this unnecessarily difficult due to the lack of continuity between their children's schedules. I personally was unable to visit my Northern Californian cousins and had issues spending time with my private school friends this past summer due to our breaks not aligning. Complying with the collegiate calendar will help alleviate this issue. While I am only a sophomore, the time is quickly approaching for me to move to college. While we spend a lot of time addressing the benefits of a later start, we can often forget that it means we also end later. I had friends that had no choice but to miss class at the end of the last school year to take part in orientations or events in June, since colleges rightly assumed most students were already finished with their classes. Many internships and job opportunities that students desire to take part of begin in June. They are missing out at a shot at something that could better their future and themselves. A change in schedule also allows most seniors more time to spend their final moments at home. Part of my job with ASB is planning rallies, dances, and school culture activities that coincide with the dates in September and October. Things like homecoming and our crucial rival football game, important parts of any high school calendar, happen early on in the year. Immense preparation goes into this time of the year to plan and execute the dance, rally, and game. Having more school time to become better equipped for everything would enhance the quality of each event. We could benefit from more time to promote said events as well, possibly increasing student attendance and in turn enriching school spirit. In addition to our work supporting these teams and the school, the change evidently has a positive aspect on the athletes as well. As of our current schedule, fall sports have no adequate way to prepare for their earlier games without practice time and peating on their summer. Our sports teams play in matches that occur before school is even in session, which makes it difficult to rally our students to attend. While breaks can be utilized as a time to improve our athletic ability, that should not serve as their primary purpose. Beginning school in August would allow more time to be attributed towards getting my peers settled and confident before the chaos of the school year kicks in. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Max? And then Ruth Kobayashi?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Max Sonnenschein, and I'm a junior at CDM in my third year in Youth and Government. I want to add on to some of Emily's points by adding three additional reasons for moving to the collegiate calendar. First, standardized testing. Two, midterms. And three, opportunities for work and internships. First, moving the start date earlier would benefit AP classes and standardized tests. Over the course of high school, I've taken seven AP classes, and I just took my ACT. I also plan on taking more standardized tests such as S-Back this year. The AP exams are always in the same time of the year in May, and with our current late-start schedule, students are put at a disadvantage, causing teachers to rush through curriculum. In addition, the current schedule also leaves an awkward time after the AP exam but before the year ends where all relevant content has been covered, but we still have class. Instead, the earlier schedule would give students more time to learn material, study, and prepare for the exam. Moreover, standardized tests such as S-Back, which would be conducted from February to April, suffers from similar problems and could be reconciled by changing the start date earlier. In other words, changing the start date will not only help students prepare for exams, but will also yield better test scores for students in our district. Second, starting the school year earlier will allow for a better time to midterm before winter break. Currently, we have to push our first semester midterms to after the two-week winter break. If we start school earlier, then we could move this to before this break. This would create a clear break and end to the first semester, which would help students come into the second semester fresh and ready to learn. This would also allow students to keep the content in front of them and engaged instead of grinding to a halt only to have to restart. While I agree that this is not the most important point, it is a factor to consider. Third and lastly, starting school earlier will also make school end earlier, which will help students participate in jobs and internships. In the past two summers, I've had internships under the Mayor of Irvine as an incoming sophomore and under the District Attorney's Office as an incoming junior. While I learned a lot and really thought that these were amazing experiences, the current schedule limited the time that I could spend in these programs. Seeing as a ton of the programs and several jobs start in June, the current schedule limits the time students can experience and spend in such programs. And this issue does not only pertain to me. Plenty of the jobs and programs that are offered for, you know, students and graduates do start in a line with a collegiate calendar. In short, moving the schedule back would help these students get involved in activities earlier in the summer. It would expand in the time that they could spend in such programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth? Followed by Dennis Ashendorf?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobayashi. Our two girls are graduates of CDM and are currently in college. I'm a former PTA Board Member and currently facilitate the Challenge Success Parent Book Club at Cronin Del Mar High School, where we seek to partner with our school for a well-balanced environment for our students. Our school district has demonstrated its commitment to student well-being by putting its money where its mouth is. Investments have been made through the Stanford-based Challenge Success Program, increased hiring of mental health professionals, support of one on campus, and professional development that focuses on caring relationships between students and teachers. Why have you done this? Because anxiety and depression are at an all-time high in schools across our country. Because just this year, students in high-performing schools and in affluent communities have been identified as high-risk students. Because anyone who reads the newspaper knows the sadness and loss in our communities. Our district has also prioritized student well-being by supporting a collegiate calendar for our schools. Being able to have final exams completed before the holidays is consistent with the current best practices in student well-being, consistent with the principles in the Challenge Success Program. Academically, students and teachers have more time to prepare for state-mandated exams and AP exams. Yes, summer will end a little bit earlier, but AP work will not need to be done over the summer. Kids will be able to compete for summer jobs with the rest of the county, and graduating seniors will be able to get to college for orientation with the rest of the country. Only in Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, and Newport Mesa do schools hold on to an outdated school calendar. We all acknowledge that the change will take some getting used to, but I urge all of our stakeholders to join nearly all of Orange County and support a new school calendar that can contribute to the health of our students and is consistent with the principles that this district has invested in for the sake of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Ashendorf, followed by Leslie Murtaugh?
Good evening, Dr. Navarro, President Matoye, and distinguished board members. Time. Time is all we have. Two years ago, Mr. Lee Sung and Mr. Drake listened to an early proposal on how to use 4+4 double blocks to improve math instruction. Yes, they rejected it, but they kept an open mind. Thank you. What I didn't voice was that I was trying to save our 4+4 blocks from two critical failures. They cost students 20% of their core class time and reduced the number of minutes people spend in school, both of which diminished morale. Ask your office managers. 4+4 fails Behavioral Management 101. 4+4 may have been worth the trade-off for more remediation, but we collapsed on the credit recovery drug. Leaving at 1:30 only benefits athletes. We are not obligated to follow PLC plans that predate Dr. Navarro. Why do I mention this now? We are at an impasse over starting school in August, which is no big deal to me. You employ me. Thank you very much. Justify starting in August by saying we need to align our athletic schedules with the CIF and other small things. Fine. However, if you claim it's for academics, ouch. Weak T. The reason is, replacing 4+4 would yield three more times the amount of core classroom minutes without disrupting families and voters. The real goal is variable-length classes. Dr. Doughty has asked time and time again, "Are you sure you're against August? We can settle quickly." Members reply, "No, August." He's representing his members. You want better academic results? Try jiu-jitsu. Drop August and replace it with the right-to-change bell schedules at the start of each semester for three years with one-month notice. Until the best one is found. Dollars would sweeten the deal, because only the teachers are being asked to waive rights. I would imagine that a combination of elementary and AP teachers would approve that contract. Forget blame. We are living within an ugly zeitgeist. Consider your managers. Their most valued ability is responding flexibly with finesse. Juggling parents, students, and teachers ain't easy, yet we're squabbling over the wording on benefits funding. Two years ago, my union was correct in asking for more money. Yes, they were. But the response wasn't, "Yikes, you're right. Anything we pay now will not be available later." Do you really need the money upfront? Instead, more ugliness. Time. We keep wasting precious time. Small issues drive the biggest wedges. Remember Big Indians versus Little Indians? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Murtaugh, followed by Esmeralda Gomboa?
Good evening. My name is Leslie Murtaugh. I've lived in Costa Mesa since I was two. I attended Adams, T. Winkle, and Estancia High Schools. My daughter did the same. I have worked full-time at Sonora, Whittier, and College Park Schools, mostly teaching kindergarten. I retired in June after 35 years of service. I care deeply about my community. My father was an officer in World War II and later a successful businessman. He taught me that the enlisted men always eat first. Dad said, "You want to make sure your men are fed." Administration has a contract. Classified employees have a contract. Teachers, who are in the trenches with our children, have no contract. The last time I spoke up about something important, I was told by the top-two administrators, "It has already been decided, and then you need to be quiet." I liked and needed my job, and I did fear retaliation. I kept quiet, retired, and am now free to speak. Class size is going up. I had 24 to 29 students per class my last several years of teaching. Special education students are routinely placed in the regular classroom. Getting children identified and serviced can take years and much extra time and effort. The need for classroom support has increased. Student stress levels are at historic highs, and the school day is longer. Teacher morale is low. They are paying the increase in health insurance premiums from last year to this year out of pocket. This is an added burden, especially for teachers starting out or those with young families and large mortgages. Administration and classified overcap expenses are being paid. They have their deal. Teachers are being asked to forget about a negotiated account that was never funded and is supposed to cover these overages. Wow. Teachers are flexible and are willing to settle matters in a fair way, but there is this prevailing sentiment that the administration takes joy in digging their heels into the ground and not wavering in their steadfast position. Isn't this supposed to be about what's best for kids? Happy teachers are best for kids, and they're still hungry and losing confidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Esmeralda. I'm a parent and PTA President at Pomona Elementary. I'm concerned with the lack of communication between parents and the district. Last year, we had the opportunity to get murals painted at our school. We were working with Mike Howard, a muralist who has worked with multiple schools at this district for over the past 25 years. He found three sponsors. They were going to provide us with about $6,000 worth of murals. They were going to provide the materials, the volunteers. All we had to do was come up with the design and get approval from the district. I worked with the principal and the administrative assistant floor. I provided all the information that I was asked for, and every time I called for updates to the district, they would either tell me that, you know, someone would get back to me. They never did. Or they would tell me to ask the principal, but she would just tell me to call the district, and so they just sent me around in circles. When I would... So, very long story short, we never got approved. We lost the sponsorship and the muralist. I also called to complain when our lunch tables were taken and given to the charter school. I was not only dismissed, but someone at the district called the principal to complain about me complaining. So, I think parents need to be able to communicate with the district. They should not be dismissed or disrespected the way that I was. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Scher, would you speak with Ms. Gomboa outside and get some more information from her, please? Thank you.
Okay, this is part of... Do this... Do it. I thought I was doing them like I did before. Okay, that got changed. I'm sorry. Steve Ray?
This is the only... Sorry about that.
We're doing all community input now.
So, there's no other opportunity for them to speak?
I thought there was an option. There's an option.
It was my understanding that...
Talk over each other, because we can't...
Okay. It was my understanding that we were going to do community input on non-agenda items at the beginning and all the other community input times as we did before.
No. Well, my understanding was that the speakers who... I'm sorry. It's your time, so we're just...
Well, we won't push the button until we get...
Okay.
It was my understanding that we were going to do community input on non-agenda items at the beginning and all the other community input times as we did before.
No, well, my understanding was that the speakers who... I'm sorry. It's your time, so we're just...
Well, we won't push a button until we get...
My understanding was that public comments and non-agenda items were at the beginning.
Right.
And those that wanted to speak on agenda items would have the option of speaking at the beginning or waiting for the agenda item, depending on their schedule.
Okay.
They may need to go home.
Mr. Ray, would you like to speak now or would you like to speak on...
One minute.
In a minute and a half? Okay, you can sit close if you want to.
He's already up.
Okay, in that case, superintendent's report.
You heard some comments regarding negotiations. I just want to make sure the public understands that we're not able to respond because we're still in negotiations. We also want to make sure that the public knows that we mutually agreed to a mediator to work with us on negotiations, and that both sides signed the form requesting mediation. So there's understanding that we were stuck and we needed some help on this, okay? And the other issue is a complaint that was filed to the Public Employees Relations Board that was talked about regarding the health benefits count, and that is also something we're not able to comment because it too is in a legal process. So these are both issues that the Federation wanted... Well, one, we were both wanting to move forward on mediation for negotiations. The Federation chose to move forward on going to have an administrative hearing with the Public Employee Relations Board, which will try to clarify the language.
Okay. Thank you. Student board member reports. So students, there's more students coming. And we start with Caroline from Corona del Mar. You probably know half of the people out there.
Good evening. I'm Caroline Brewster, and I'm representing Corona del Mar High School. And here's a quick briefing about what's been happening on campus these past two weeks. For an academic update, over 95% of students enrolled in an AP class or signed up for the AP exam. And this semester, 444 students qualified for California Scholarship Federation as well.
Wow.
In athletics, our football team just won their second round of CIF, and they are on to the semifinals this Friday versus Almane. The girls tennis team won Division One CIF last week for the first time in two years. As for recent events, ASB's VAPA Committee put on the first annual open mic night last Tuesday in the quad, and it was a huge success. There were a host of performances that included slam poetry, piano and vocal solos, and stand-up comedy. Peer Assistance Leadership also put on Friendship Week last week, which included colorful decorations and break activities. In upcoming events, Orca's Dance Team has been rehearsing for weeks in preparation for the annual Dancing with the Teachers, which is this Thursday. Students get the opportunity to see their teachers outside of class doing something fun outside of teaching. As for community projects, AYS and EIT leadership groups collaborated and executed a canned food drive during their giving Thanksgiving two weeks ago and donated the collected goods to a local homeless shelter. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Kenya. That's nice, thank you. Feel free, you can applaud. We like to listen to students, too.
Okay, so hi, my name is Kenya Roach, and I represent Estancia High School. So for the academic update, on November 3, three seniors signed to the university that they will be attending to this fall, 2020. And on November 15, we recognize students for outstanding grades in behavior as our students of the quarter. For the athletic update, we won our football Battle of the Bell game versus Mesa with a score of 27-21, getting us that 6-peat.
Rub it in.
And our winter sports are coming up, and we're excited to finally get our new stadium, which opens this week, and our first home game is tomorrow versus Sentry for soccer. And some events that will be happening in our school is our annual blood drive is tomorrow, November 30. We will be having a spirit week to celebrate Kindness Week this week, and Lean Crew on Monday put up kind sayings on the students' lockers. And ASB will be putting up a little photo booth for students to take pictures with their friends. And seven students with the help of two staff members will be a part of a program called Diversity, Inclusion, and Racial Healing, and this program is to help reduce cultural stereotyping among the youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine.
Good evening, President Matoye, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, distinguished guests, and fellow student board members. I'm Catherine Pham, the student board rep for Costa Mesa High School. Okay, the 11th grade Delta field trip is this week. Delta students are traveling to Palo Alto and San Francisco, where they will be touring Stanford University and UC Berkeley. Last week, it was signing day for two very talented Mustang athletes. Malia Tafugo will be playing volleyball at Stanford University, and Aiden Blair will be swimming at Cal Poly. Both are Division One schools. The CMHS Girls Cross Country Team has qualified for CIF finals. They took second at prelims with senior Diane Molina leading the way with a first-place finish. They are one step away from state. Our wrestling program will be sponsoring a 32-team tournament this Saturday with teams from all over Southern California. Our cross-country runners, Diane Molina and JP Batazi, were named as the Kuanis Athletes of the Month. Mesa cheerleader Tristan Taber has been named a National Wendy's High School Heisman School winner. Tristan is a member of our cheer squad, Traditional Cheer and Stunt. She was honored for her excellence in academics, athletics, and community service. The Reflections Look Within Art Showcase featured three Costa Mesa artists, Vivian Nguyen for photography, Avery Sojo for visual arts, and me, Catherine Pham, for literature. The CMHS band received first place at the recent University High School Tournament. Spread the Love Week is this week. Every day, there will be a different ASB-sponsored activity that's held during lunch. What's really fun about this week is not only are we spreading love, ASB always covers the quad with hearts. Each individual heart has one person's name on it, and everybody gets a heart, students and staff. Finally, there is a beach cleanup day set for November 23. That wraps up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Luke? It's very professional.
Oh, amazing.
We've even had iPads. Oh, for those of us that are print challenged.
That's a little advanced for me. Good evening, President Matoye, board trustees, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet, and distinguished guests. My name is Luke Graham, and I'm here representing Early College High School. So just to run through this really quickly. Academic update-wise, this Thursday evening at 6:30 PM is our first ECHS Information Night for current middle school students and their parents to learn more about ECHS. Principal Dr. Martinez, who's hopefully here, high school counselor Mrs. Gallini, and our students will be present to share about ECHS, the application for students to apply to ECHS for the 2020-2021 site as early as January 1. Hard copies can be picked up at ECHS on January 13 when we return from our winter break. As always, athletics, we have none.
That's not what Dr. Martinez said.
It's not funny.
He tweeted pictures of soccer.
Yeah, there's some stuff going on. And we have a house comp this weekend. Oh, all sorts of things, always. So back on November 2, ECHS dance students participated in a dance show titled "A Tribute to Love," held at the Costa Mesa High School Performing Arts Center, along with students from University High School in Irvine. This year featured 38 ECHS students who are participating and performing in dance, which is a program now in its fourth year of existence at our school. Early this month, on November 7, Ms. Lawrence, who serves as our sophomore and senior English teacher, as well as our avid senior seminar teacher, was honored at a pregame ceremony held at the Staples Center prior to the Clippers versus Trail Blazers NBA basketball game as part of the Los Angeles Clippers Teachers Appreciation Program, recognizing outstanding teachers in Southern California. This is the third consecutive year an ECHS teacher has been recognized, as Ms. Treffner was a recipient in 2017, and Ms. Warren was a recipient in 2018. Otherwise than that, upcoming events, we're looking at this Friday, our avid seniors, just like me, along with Dr. Martinez, who is also the avid district director, will be heading up to San Diego or down to San Diego for an all-day-long college field trip. One week from today, on November 26, we are looking forward to our third annual college application success event, CASC. This is the day we celebrate our class of 2020, which is also me, as all seniors will have submitted at least one college application on this date. We know several board members, Dr. Navarro, and other officials from our school district and Orange County Department of Education will be in attendance that day, as we appreciate the support of that.
Thank you very much. Bailey.
President Matoye.
Oops, I'm sorry. Bailey, feel free to stand.
That's okay. I'll have a comment after.
Bailey, okay. Go, Bailey.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, and community members. My name is Ava Glass, and I'm a replacement for Bailey tonight.
Sorry.
I'm the student board representative from Newport Harbor High School. An academic update that happened last week was the joining of IB Biology, IB Astronomy, and AP Physics classes to choose groups for a group for a project being presented in December. Students were expected to group up with students in a different science class than themselves to choose a current science topic of their choice to research. In athletics, football won a CIF playoff game last Friday. We came back in the fourth quarter from being 10 points behind. The stands were packed, and everyone was having a great time in the student section. Waterpolo got second place in Division One CIF in the championship game on Saturday night. In current events, Drama is currently hosting the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee Play, with shows playing last weekend and this upcoming weekend. ASB is hosting Kindness Week this week, with different kindness activities happening every day at lunch. We have installed a poster wall with kind messages and another wall with every student's name on it to make everyone feel included in this week's activities. Some upcoming events include the district-wide beach cleanup happening on Saturday to finish off Kindness Week. We've contacted our big clubs and have had announcements going throughout the last couple weeks to promote it. And finally, earlier this month, PTA sponsored our Grandparents' Day luncheon, where over 1,000 students and their grandparents enjoy the lunch together provided by our culinary arts program. Newport Harbor is excited for the upcoming holiday festivities and performances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Sorry about that. Mrs. Snell.
Snell. I'm just wondering, last meeting, I asked the student board members if they could go back to their groups and find and talk about incentives for the S-BAC in 11th grade. Were you able to do that? I know it's been kind of busy.
Should we ask them again?
Well, Luke?
I mean, I don't really have, like, anything new. We talked about it briefly.
You probably should come up so they can... Yeah, yeah.
Here I am again.
How's everybody doing? We talked about it. We didn't have a lot of time. We have a lot of things going on at school, as you heard. But, I mean, I'm going to still stick by... We all sort of agreed upon it. We didn't get to expand upon it, though, the idea of competition within the district. I mean, it's healthy. We love crushing each other's schools. And in the kindest way possible, yeah. And, I mean, so long as we're avoiding... Oh, I completely blanked on what we're avoiding, but it was terrible.
Putting it on the transcript?
Yes, that's the thing that we were avoiding.
I kind of thought that might be it.
Yes, no, don't do that, please.
Yeah. Competition's a little bit like, are we talking about competition with who gets the highest scores or competition?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really know about that.
Percentages of people that...
Take it?
Well, no, because everybody should be taking it.
We need to evolve that idea a little further. And, yeah, and I would be interested in the other students, like, if you could. I know there's a lot going on, and when's our next meeting? December 10?
10.
10. Yeah, so maybe by the beginning of the year, January, our first meeting in January, if you could come back with some ideas from your governance groups on how we could... And maybe incentives isn't the answer, but how we could encourage students in 11th grade, I'm speaking of 11th grade, to give a higher priority focus on the S-BAC.
Most definitely.
Okay, thank you, Luke.
Of course.
We ought to feed them. Feed them? Feed them.
Oh, yeah. If we feed them, they will come.
Board, I would like to ask your indulgence. At the very beginning, when we adopted our agenda, I was remiss in requesting that we adjourn this meeting in the name of Linda Snene, who was a school board member, a hugely supportive PTA mom, who lost her battle with cancer over the weekend, or a week...
Last week.
Last week. And so I forgot to do that, so if that's okay and we're nodding is fine. I just wanted to make sure that we had that on the record. Thank you. All right.
Madam President, before you leave that topic that Mrs. Snell brought up with the student, I was going to recommend that if our student leaders can speak with their activities directors, and then that information can then get funneled to our superintendent's student advisory, who can then take the ball and run with it. So if you don't mind speaking to your activities director and asking him how you can get some good ideas on what would inspire everybody to really do their best on S-BAC as 11th graders, then that information can go to the students who are part of the student advisory, and we could have a robust debate about it and maybe take it from there.
So not report back?
They can report back, but I'm just saying that I'd like them to include the activities director as well.
Because they don't... Well, the student advisory committee doesn't report to us, so we've got to talk. And we have a very unique situation with a captive audience of, quote, "young people who must take this S-BAC in their 11th grade." Do any of you have any feedback to give us right now? If you don't have to write a paper, you just can come up to the microphone and say, much like Luke, oh, gosh, don't put it on our transcripts, or yes, let's have healthy competition. To bring you up to speed, we have found that there's a concern in the 11th grade. With the data that we see, there's a big dip of the amount of people. It shows our growth going like this all the way up till the 11th grade, and it kind of drops off. We, as adults and school board members, understand that in the 11th grade, you have, oh, let's see, AP testing, ACT testing, SAT testing, and your brains are frazzled to the very end, but that S-BAC testing is really important for us as a school district. So we were looking at, how do we help make it important to you to try your best on the test and not just show up and take it and say, I don't... It doesn't matter. This isn't going to help me. I don't care. So that's where we were going. So if you have any great ideas, crickets? Okay. If you think... Yes, yes. Did you... I saw one in the back.
Come up.
Come on up. Just come up to the microphone, and you can come up in groups if you want. And the reason we have you come up to the mic is because our meetings are recorded, and that way, for all posterity, we can hear you.
Okay.
You can just pull it to... There you go. Perfect. Give us your name, though.
Hi, I'm Michelle Cleely.
Hi.
I'm part of Youth in Government, so we're here today just to observe and stuff like that. I agree that testing becomes really redundant from ACT, AP, and just we lose focus of, like, the meaning of all these things. Like, we know AP is for college credit, ACT is to get into college, that I feel like a lot of students don't know the purpose of S-BAC testing. I recall sitting in my 11th grade classroom, and everyone's like, oh, what's this even for? Like, if I put random answers, what's going to happen? They're so... They get very, like, flustered with, like, all the testing. They don't really know the purpose. So personally, I believe that I can't put my all into everything if I don't know where my score is going, what this score is for. So I believe if we were more informed of what this score was for, people would try. And I remember, I was told that this score could possibly be used for some kind of credit if you go to, like, a community college. I'm not sure, but that was an incentive for me to think, maybe I will end up at a two-year college. Maybe this could help me. So I personally put my all into that test, and I knew that even if, like, it didn't matter, that there's a possibility that it could help. So I think just informing the students would be really helpful, and yeah, that's pretty much it.
That's a great idea.
Thank you. And thank you for being brave to come up and talk.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Oops. Okay. Same crickets.
If you think of something, you can contact your student board member, or you can send an email to all of us.
Yep, and, oh, yes, please. You can put NMUSD Board of Education, and it comes to everybody. Otherwise, you can send it to any one of us you like. Dr. Navarro?
The activity director, too, will let them.
Yes, activity director. Yeah, talk to them.
Whatever.
Let it get back to us. Dr. Navarro?
Well, I'm impressed that she knew about the qualification score. And really what it's for, it's for the Cal States. So it gets you into a four-year college if you have a certain score on these exams. They will actually reach out to you and accept you early. So it's an early identification tool for 11th graders.
Whoa.
S-Back is, yes.
Whoa.
We need to get that out there.
See, isn't it good you asked? Because now we all know too. Wow.
Not just grading on how we're doing.
Apparently it does more than just how our district is doing. That being said, Vicky, who is Julie, welcome back. By the way, I was just at Harborview and I noticed that art tiles are right next to each other on the wall.
Oh. That's a very melancholy moment. Good evening, I'm Vicky Waldo in Julie Lang's absence, representing Harbor Council PTA. Good evening, President Matoye, board members, Dr. Navarro, and cabinet. I'm very pleased to talk to you tonight about last Thursday night. We had the reception for our reflections on entries. We've seen an increase in entries as well as schools participating this year. We are very excited that last year we had 86 art entries, and this year we've gone up to 90. And we had 14 schools participating last year, and this year we have 18 schools participating. And a couple of them actually had first-place winners. Two schools that are brand-new, that have never participated before, Pollerino and Victoria, and Victoria did have a first-place winner. Just to give you an idea of the schools that did produce a first-place winner that will go on to Fourth District's Orange County Competition, Adams, CDM, Costa Mesa High, Davis, Early College High, East Bluff, Enson, Lincoln, Newport Coast, Newport Elementary, Newport Harbor, and Victoria, all had first-place winners in various categories. Now, they will go on to the Orange County selection process and probably will be announced, I'm going to guess, early February. And they will have a reception for Orange County, then they go on to state after that. And we're, of course, very excited to tell you if we'll have someone going on to state this year. Also, I wanted to give you just a membership update for Harbor Council. Last year, duh-duh-duh, okay, this is little print. Last year, we ended the year with 7,126 PTA members throughout our district. So far this year, middle of November, we have 6,251. So we are within 900 members of meeting our goal for last year. And I just thought I'd throw this out to you right now. We have one school that has more PTA members right now than any other school, and it's Davis. They surpassed CDM and Newport Harbor High this year, so far. That's just so far.
Remember that competition we were talking about?
Yeah. Also, I wanted to remind you that December 2nd is our holiday luncheon. We hope to see everyone there. Just to give you an update on, you probably know that one of our key members, Cynthia Strassman, has taken over as president to the Back Bay Montevista PTA in helping them out. And she's done some wonderful programs there addressing attendance and tardies. One of the programs that she came forward with, with, it's a no tardy party. And for students that fall within a certain parameter of a limited number of tardies, they get a special luncheon every couple of months. And I think their first luncheon is this Friday, and she's really excited because it did help tardy attendance. SAC Safari, it's coming up in February, February 24th through 25th for everyone. Sacramento Safari is PTA's envoy to Sacramento to learn as much as we possibly can learn about what's going on in Sacramento, the bills that are happening, the education process, education funding, et cetera. In two full days of activities, speakers, wonderful speakers, and you go to the Capitol and you meet with some of the representatives. You go up Monday morning, February 24th, very early. You come back Tuesday night, the 25th, exhausted. They even have speakers during dinner. So this is like, no fun time. It is all education time. It's wonderful. And everyone that goes has always been extremely grateful that they had the opportunity to go. And we are hoping that we might have some board members that would like to participate because you're all welcome to go. You can go on to fourthdistrictpta.org and register online. Then one last thing, we do have our advocacy forum for Fourth District coming up this Friday morning. I wanted to tell you who's going to be there. A second, find my paper. There we go. Advocacy Forum, this Friday morning from 9:30 to 11:30 at Fountain Valley School District Boardroom. They are going to have what's happening in Sacramento from the local legislators. They have Tyler Deep, the State Assemblyman for 72nd Assembly District, Ling Ling Chang from the 29th Senate District, and Bob Archileta from the 32nd Senate District. I've heard him speak before and he's phenomenal. So you're all welcome, 9:30 to 11:30 Friday morning, the Advocacy Forum. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a report from Mrs. Franco on kindness.
Okay, so you told that gentleman it would be a minute and a half.
No, you said a minute and a half. I said you ought to wait till it was time.
Oh, okay. Are you okay? You're okay? Okay.
Are you comfortable? Thank you.
Good evening, President Matoye, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and guests. I'm here to present to you a brief video on kindness throughout our district, which was originally featured at our State of the Schools breakfast last month, so should just be less than five minutes of your time here.
I think that kindness is an extremely important value that we've embedded in our schools. It's really important for us to teach students how to be kind and caring and empathetic, because that's really what 21st century learning is all about.
Being kind is important to me because it's the first thing you give to the parents. It's what you want to receive as well from parents, from kids. You just want to give a positive environment for them.
Every day, just do something small, because it starts from something small and then it expands to something bigger.
As adults and really as educators, we have a unique opportunity to make such a powerful difference in the lives of our students and really in the future lives of generations to come through our ability to influence students to perform acts of kindness intentionally.
One of the things on campus that we have to be kind is the buddy system. You get paired up with kindergarteners, and you get to choose. It puts a positive impact on the younger children, and then they'll be kind to others.
My focus as a teacher is really just to build their confidence in themselves. They can accept kindness and receive that, but then also give that back to make their school, their family, their community a better place.
We have a peers group. The main thing is friendship, doing different role-playing. So it really helps them practice those skills that they need to be able to be out, you know, within the school campus and being kind.
One of the kindness campaigns we have is Snapjars, where you write a note to someone and like say something nice, like something good.
My students love the Snapjar. They think it's so much fun. They beg me to do it every single time we have class.
You are always focused and paying attention. Keep it up. When I write a kindness note to someone else, it makes me feel good about myself. And when they get it, it makes their day so much better, and it makes them feel good about themselves.
So district-wide, we're what's called a PBIS district, or a Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports District. So across our district, we have programs like POW, Peer Assistance Leaders. We have days dedicated to being kind.
Something that we do that I love is mix it up. It just brings over 150-plus students to sit across these tables and really get to know each other. Because if we didn't have this event, the students would just see each other as strangers in the hall.
Kids are always watching adults, whether we know it or whether we see it or not. They are constantly watching our every move to see what we're doing and how we're reacting to certain situations. So it's important to show kindness, to show responsibility.
Making the ID badges is a really good opportunity to spread kindness, because most people come in very fearful of getting their picture taken. They don't like to be put on the spot, but I try to make them feel as comfortable as possible, making it a cheerful experience.
Being kind gives a positive reflection on the individual and the warehouse as a whole. If we are kind and have a positive outlook, it makes all of our duties and transactions just go a little bit more smoothly.
Being involved in the community for adults is super-important, because that helps not only your kids, not yourself, but the community, the entire community itself, by getting involved. And you help others at the same time that you are helping yourself, you're helping your family, and you're learning on the way.
By being models of kindness for ourselves, our children emulate that. Other community members see how kind we are and want to emulate that. And it brings us together as a community, not just as part of the school, but as the larger community.
Everyone in the Newport Mesa Unified School District believes that we create a greater sense of purpose and efficacy when we're kind to one another and when we build relationships. So get involved.
Have a positive attitude.
High-five someone.
Start a conversation.
Lead by example.
Have the positive attitude to just see the good in the people around you.
Be aware of others.
Really listen to others.
Reach out to someone in need.
Provide great customer service.
Be encouraging to the people around you.
Take care of our planet.
Let's let one another know what we appreciate about them.
When we perform acts of kindness and when we do things that are good for one another, we become stronger as a community.
So I think the presentation was perfectly timed on purpose, of course, with NMUSD Kindness Week, which you heard from student board members earlier today. So we hope you enjoyed the video, and we hope that you continue to spread kindness throughout the school year. And if you recall, a little video we did earlier this year on early college high school. We actually were just informed last week that we won a Public Relations Society of America Award for that video. And it's going to be submitted for the state chapter for Public Relations Society of America.
Wow.
Wow. Mrs. Black?
Yeah, I just think, speaking of opportunity, it couldn't be better. So the students' leadership at all of the comprehensive high schools have been working on Kindness Week, and I know that you're all fully engaged as you leave. But this Saturday, this week culminates to, on the 23rd, at the Balbo up here is a beach cleanup. And it starts, well, I think nine o'clock officially. You know, they ask the students that are organizing it to be there, you know, a little after eight o'clock. And it should be great, and it should be over, you know, late morning, and so you're not giving up your whole Saturday. But it's a good cause, and I'm really proud of the students. They did an amazing job, and their leadership is amazing, you know, just, they're really on top of it, so, thanks for that.
You're welcome, Mrs. Snell.
I just wanted to find out from Mrs. Franco, who put the video together. Sorry, I didn't make you.
You left so quickly.
This is helping her out with her steps.
Want to do a little, I know you probably directed it.
So the videos are all put together by Adriana Angulo in the communications office and myself, but mostly her. And then the actual videotaping technical side of it is a Westbound Communications. It's a public relations firm that we contract with for video and other public relations services.
Okay, well done.
Yes, thank you very much. Wonderful. She makes us smile. Dr. Navarro, informal report.
Sure, well, I'd like to start off by reminding everybody that, you know, we have some principles that we follow when it comes to transforming our system to make sure all of our students are being challenged, okay, and that they're really pushed to reach their potential. Of course, we want to focus on instruction. Of course, we want to focus to make sure that we work with all students. But we also want to make sure that, as we're doing this, that we're working as a team. And so I've asked our team today, we may be small today, but we're mighty, is to talk about how we're focusing on systems. I think the video right there was a really good example of a systems process. You heard site leaders, teachers, the district staff, all focused on one way to build an accepting, understanding climate for our students at their schools. I think yesterday's study session on English learners, Status of English Learner Program and on Title I, really showed how schools, TOSSAs, teachers, directors, coordinators are working together with a common vision to make a difference and raise the achievement bar for ELL students and our Title I students. So hopefully, you'll pick up on that theme as we go around here. I know that Dr. Barameister and Mr. Drake are going to talk a little bit about some systems thinking. But we really want to bring a little bit of that sense to our meetings, because none of us does this work alone. And it's a team effort, and we're really working to reach every kid in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. Well, as many of you on the board know, we've been working particularly in our Facilities Maintenance and Operations Department on improving our systems of communication and planning for projects. And I was really pleased the student board member from Estancia High School kind of stole my exciting news for today, which is that the field was completed on time before the winter sports began, as we had planned.
And before it rains.
And in spite of the fact that even when we are doing good systems planning, sometimes circumstances are what they are, and we ran into some difficulties on that project. But by employing a systems approach, our team has really stayed on top of the project, has found the ways to mitigate the impacts that came, communicate those to the staff so that everyone has been aware of the updates on that project and that we were getting it in place and in time. And so it's been really nice to get the thank-yous from the folks on the site to Mr. Bidnick for those, as well at that wonderful school, just to focus on that school for this evening. Other great projects that are moving along, the pool project is moving along very well. We're very excited about how that project has gotten focused and is being delivered to the expectations that we laid forward a year-plus ago. And as well, the theater project is continuing in its design process. And I was just at a meeting with the architect this last week and extremely pleased to see how the schematic design that you approved is fleshing out into a more complete project that I think is going to make everybody at that school and in our community very, very proud of the new project.
In the fiscal division, we've been spending a lot of time on standards and identifying externally-recognized best practices and then applying those to our processes and seeing the connections there with all the other departments that we connect to. And so it's been very helpful. It's a lot of work, but we're making a good progress on that. And we expect that things will eliminate a lot of clunkiness. Because as you can imagine, being compliance-driven, we have a lot of forms, and we have a lot of procedures and processes that touch other divisions and that kind of thing. And so we want to keep the business of the district moving along as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And then I understand you all are avid readers, and so I'd wanted to make you aware that the Legislative Analyst has released the 2019 Budget Review. And there's some good news in that, in that the governor has made his, the first deposit ever to the Education Rainy Day Fund of $377 million, which always is great. Stability is wonderful. And to create some stability there is good news. He also put down a lot of money to help stabilize purrs and stirs, which is helpful for us. So overall, it's great news. It's not as scintillating reading as your budget, but pretty good reading, so thank you.
So to piggyback on Dr. Navarro's theme of systems, we're talking about community engagement as a system. And so I'm updating on the Human Relations Task Force. We'll have a meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. The meeting will be at the Costa Mesa High School Library. And at that meeting, we'll be rolling out the district implementation of the Human Relations Task Force recommendation. So there'll be two documents. The first one will be a document that actually shows their recommendations. a document that actually shows their recommendations and how we're meeting those recommendations. And then, did you guys get this document? Did Annette get this out? You didn't. She'll be getting this tomorrow. At the end, then, we'll be rolling it out. This is more of a public-facing document that shows kind of what the plan is and for students and for staff and community and parents. So we'll be rolling that out tomorrow night, talking about the implementation and monitoring of this plan. And so the big job, I think, for the task force moving forward is, in committees, we'll be getting together, developing rubrics to evaluate these programs, to see if they're meeting the needs of our community and of our kids and of our school, of the programs that we have moving forward. So that will be the work moving forward. We'll be looking at our calendar and, again, coming up with rubrics to self-evaluate these programs that we're putting into place.
I have a quick question. Is that a, the committee meeting, or is that?
Committee meeting, yes.
Okay, it's a committee meeting. So then you will come back to the board and present the, I mean, I know we're going to get a piece of paper. I just don't know whether...
What's the next step? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, what's the next step? Well, he told me the next step, a rubric.
Well, this is the plan. This will tell you everything that we're doing, that the district is doing as far as all of our 10th graders are going in the Museum of Tolerance. There's different things in the plan. The work of the committee then, moving forward, is to, we'll be creating rubrics and creating evaluation for those plans to make sure they're meeting the needs. And then again, the committee will adjust that moving forward, deciding is that something we want to move forward with for next year or not. So that'll kind of be the work.
Karen?
Yeah, I just have a question, Dr. Baumeister. Did you notify all the task force members of the change in location?
Yes, it was sent out, but we're also going to send it out again tomorrow as a reminder.
Okay, just to make sure, so you don't want people to come here.
Yes. So we sent it out about a week or two ago, but we're going to send it out again tomorrow morning. Yeah, that's a good idea. Maybe we'll have somebody back here in case somebody shows up, just in case. But yes, we'll have somebody.
Not that I would ever do that, but sometimes the car just goes right to where it's always going.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. We'll have somebody here just in case.
Can we also make sure that there's an announcement that goes out maybe at Mesa over their loudspeaker or through their activity director somehow, so the students there know that it's at their location?
At Costa Mesa High School? Okay.
Okay, as Dr. Navarro alluded to, we had an opportunity yesterday to listen to our Director of Special Projects, Vanessa Galey, and our Coordinator of EL Services really take us on a deep dive of the supports that are in place for our Title I schools and our EL students. And really, besides all of the progress that we've made at those sites and with our EL students, if you step back and look at what they were really talking about, it did have everything to do with systems and structures and process. And what I can also share with you is that does not happen overnight. That takes a long time to put in place, and Vanessa and Laura will be the first to say their work's not done, but I will let you know that it's taken several years for them to get to this place, and it's an incredible amount of hard work that they've done to get us to this point. In that same vein, you've heard a lot tonight about social-emotional learning, mental health, and that whole aspect of the child that we need to be caring for as a district. And what I want to share with you is we are taking our next steps in developing those systems as a team. ED Services is working very closely with Student Services under Dr. DiAgostino's kind of leadership in developing our social-emotional behavioral side of our MTSS supports. And again, this is going to take us some time to make sure that we are going back and forth with our principals and our teachers and our students to make sure that we're being as efficient and systematic as we possibly can be to get them the support they need, both academically as well as socially and emotionally. Dr. DiAgostino, with George Knights, has put together a task force of, that includes some district personnel as well as site and counseling support, to come together periodically to make sure that we're hearing what we need to hear in order to put these systems in place. So again, kind of back to that idea of systems and structures and really coming together to collaborate around social-emotional needs of kids. We hope, in a short period of time, we'll be coming back to you with where we are in all of that.
Ms. Anderson?
Oh, did I not call it earlier? It was just from what I was saying.
Okay.
About Meister.
I've got it. Okay. Mrs. Flor.
Thanks, John. It was fabulous yesterday, and I really appreciate it. One thing, when you're talking about this, I hope that you will consider, as you get down, parents and utilizing the PTA and students, because there are not only students that are in crisis, but there are families in crisis. And if we know anything through our SARB process and through what we go through on the School Attendance Review Board, is that it is a whole system, it's the family system that in sometimes is in crisis, it's causing students to fail at school. And they may be being very successful at school, but their family life is in chaos. And so I would hope that as we go through this systems approach, that we don't ignore a major component of that, which is parents and community, and that there needs to be some sort of place for them at the table to have a conversation, as well as students.
Part of the system.
Part of the system.
They need to be part of the system.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Gee, we're going to have a shorter time. Oh, John.
No, no, no.
Don't jinx it. I know.
Don't forget Mr. Ray.
I have definitely not forgotten Mr. Ray. But we have to move in second and then let you speak. We are now coming to the exciting part of our meeting, which is the consent calendar. For you and youth and government, it's not exciting at all. I need a motion to approve this consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Mrs. Bartow moved to second.
Second.
Is that Mrs. Yelsey? Okay, Mrs. Yelsey. And before we vote, we have one comment. Mr. Ray. Oh, you guys are, I'll miss Mr. Ray. You should wait till he speaks. It's only three minutes. He can't talk longer. We cut him off.
Well, thank you, Madam President, and Honorable Board Members, staff. I'm Steve Ray, Executive Director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. First of all, please excuse my voice tonight. I am just recovering from a severe bout of laryngitis, and I may lose my voice a little here, so please bear with me here. I came to you a couple of months back and offered to work with you and your staff to help restore the land that you own that's adjacent to Banning Ranch. That offer still stands. We're very serious about that. But I wanted to speak on your 17A item here, because I see that you're in the process of hiring legal counsel regarding, I'm sure it's regarding that matter, maybe others too, but that one for sure. And first of all, let me say that Susan Hori of Manette Phelps is an excellent attorney. She is an extremely worthy opponent, and she is absolutely the friendliest opposing counsel I've ever sat across the table from. So I highly recommend her for her talent and her skill. But I would like to caution you that, before you decide to challenge the Coastal Commission, that you need to have another perspective on this. Ms. Hori certainly will provide excellent counsel to you for whatever you decide to do. But I make another offer to you tonight, and that is that I will again offer the assistance of myself and the Banning Ranch Conservancy to work with you to try to resolve this matter. Knowing just a little bit about the Coastal Act and how the system works and everything, and having been to the Supreme Court and the Coastal Commission regarding those issues, we feel that we may be able to offer some of our expertise to you, and would be happy to meet with you and your staff and your counsel to try to work something out, because I think going to the Coastal Commission in a spirit of kindness and cooperation is probably going to be much more effective than taking an adversarial role with them. So we are here and as, hopefully, your neighbor and trying to be neighborly here. And speaking of being a neighbor, you might have heard at our gala a couple of months ago, or a couple of weeks ago, where we celebrated our 20th anniversary of trying to preserve Banning Ranch, that we made three big announcements. One, that's the Trust for Public Land, which is a very large land negotiation agency, has partnered with us to negotiate the purchase of Banning Ranch with the owners. We have a design team that are working with us to realize our vision, and we have a donor that gave us $50 million to achieve that. So we're hoping to be your neighborly neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, youth and government, for waiting. I appreciate it. Good job.
I'd just like to let you know that the young man who's leading the students out used to be a teacher. Brandon is now in private industry, but he spends his time, personal time, to come down and work with the Youth and Government Group down at CDM, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon.
For the Newport Mesa, any time with these, we happen to not, more than you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Bartow.
We haven't voted yet.
I just had one. It's more of a question, and it's for Tim and it's for future. For the HVAC 17A6, I reviewed that. It looks great. My only question was, I went through the facilities report, and I didn't, I don't know if you have planned, and it's just not on here for, I was, when I did my tour of schools, the culinary staff at Newport Harbor mentioned that their cafeterias, and we've talked about it in the past, need AC as well. Is that something that's on for future?
On the Newport Harbor group?
Yes. And I think Costa Mesa as well.
So, let me, I'm actually having a little bit of trouble hearing, but I think what you asked was, is the cafeteria at Newport Harbor on the plan for air conditioning?
Yes.
Yes.
And the answer is that the program has been to air condition the classrooms. So the current plans, the plans that we've been following, has been to complete classrooms. It's not on the current list. At the current time, that's not one of the areas that's being...
I think what you're asking is about the home ec classrooms, where they do the culinary classes.
No, I went, when I was here for the teacher meeting in the summer, it came up too. They were just wondering if it was going, if it was something that we have planned going forward.
The cooking part or the eating part?
The, in the actual cafeteria, because they work in there sometimes.
Okay.
Oh, well, yes. Those are different. Those are very different, and those will be different designs. But Mr. Holcomb's right, we are AC-ing all the learning areas right now, okay?
Thank you.
That's a new cafeteria. That was, I mean, the cooking area, the kitchen is new. They're cooking at Newport Harbor, that's...
That kitchen was, yes, was reconstructed when the building was reconstructed, when the former building was taken down with the tower, et cetera.
And that one might have it, but all our other kitchens do not.
Okay, so it's probably just me mis, not understanding what I was asking, so thanks for the clarification. Yeah, it was about the cooking area.
Yes, yes. And those are not on because of where they're located and the cost associated with having to redo the whole building over.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
I have a follow-up question to that, because we are doing our summer food programs at Costa Mesa High School. It's not air-conditioned. So there, we have our staff that are in there, and it's extremely hot. I've also heard that from teachers and people that work in the kitchens. So I'm just concerned that we're doing such a big project at Mesa particularly, and that's where we were doing summer school and the summer meals for students.
What I can tell you is that the directive that we've been following for the last few years of air conditioning our sites has been a program to air condition our classrooms. And so that's been what we've been doing at each and every school, as we have gone to each school, and it will be completing that mission by air conditioning at a couple of high schools that still have a few classrooms that need to be air-conditioned this next summer, which will meet your expectation of air conditioning all classrooms by the start of school next year.
For the summer programs, are the meals cooked here or at Costa Mesa? Because they go to a couple places.
The meals are there for people who don't have access to food.
I don't have Dale here, but I thought, it's cooked away, and it's heated on the campus, but so it's not about cooking. It's just keeping things warm.
Because I was at the Wellness Committee, which, that I'll report on later, but they cook meals for various...
So I will get Dale to give us an update that I can give to the board later this week on how we operate the summer food program at Costa Mesa. She's not here, so I don't want to, I don't want to make any assumptions.
I bring it up because the staff person asked me about it and said that it was sweltering. So that's, it's not my personal experience. It's a person who is in our kitchen at Mesa providing...
It is accurate that our kitchens are not ACed.
Is there a plan to do that?
Not yet.
No, not at this point.
Any other questions on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Resolution Consent Calendar.
Approve adoption of the Resolution Consent Calendar. Resolution 121119, selection of Farmers and Merchants Bank as depository for various accounts of district and authorizations therewith. And 18B 131119, requesting financial assistance, which I think is really important, this one, from the Orange, the County of Orange, and their receipt, the receipt of Mental Health Services Funds, as approved by the County Board of Supervisors. This one is about money that is entitled to us and to schools, that the County Board of Supervisors, in terms of the tax of the one million, the million-dollar income, they're hoarding it. They are. They are exactly hoarding it. And there's a ton of money there, and they have not released it to our schools. It's over 70, how many millions of dollars?
Hundreds of millions of dollars?
Well, at the first, at the first glance, or the first allocation that came to Orange County, there were $240 million there.
And it's still there?
No, they've spent it other ways.
On homeless.
Yes.
Not on...
But it's also, we're collectively doing this with the other districts in Orange County, not just Newport Mesa.
We're just asking them to release the funds to...
To second it? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to vote for both adoptions. All those, it's a roll call vote. Mrs. Snyder?
Ms. Metoyer?
Yes.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Snow?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion Action Calendar. 18A, Mrs. Galey. It's a big week for you. Did you get to sleep at all?
I was looking for your daughter. I thought you might have brought her.
I thought about that. It would be fun to have Bring Your Daughter Today to work in the evening. So President Metoyer, members of the board, and Dr. Navarro, and Cabinet and distinguished guests, we have an annual item before you this evening, which is approval of our school plans. The format of the plan changed, and that's why we wanted to make sure that we address any questions that you have. The template changed in early February, that's when some of the news was released. And the purpose of the change was really to adjust the alignment, because No Chad Left Behind ended, and in its place, the Every Students Succeed Act arrived, and there were some additional requirements. So the template changed, and one of the things that we did is took some school representatives to a training in early March to learn about the template and to say, is this the right time for all of us to transition? And so when we looked at it, we thought we were all up to the task. So it was a rather lengthy process with Document Tracking Services, who is our vendor, to bring that new template into alignment, and then to combine it with some of our old elements that we wanted to preserve. And so what we're bringing before you meets compliance requirements, and to the very best of my knowledge, all of the action services and expenditures also meet compliance requirements. And lastly, you should know that the, one of the purposes of the redesign was to make it align more closely with the LCAP template. So the look and feel is similar to the LCAP, and it has very similar elements in the preamble to it. And then towards the end is more of the components that align with the parent engagement policy, the school site council membership, et cetera. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Mrs. Black?
You know, I just, thank you for meeting with us, too. And it is very daunting, but it's also great. I mean, it's not something that I can get through in, you know, even a couple of weeks. But, so I appreciate all of that. But one of the things that came up in my meeting was, somebody wanted it online. And I just think that's very unrealistic, you know, to actually burden the public with such a detailed, you know, report. But I did... But I did like your suggestion of having anyone in the public meet with the principal for their specific school, because more often, people, we're looking at every school, district wide. But, and I know principals have been really forthcoming and happy to sit down and walk, you know, walk me through it, so, for their individual schools. So, I would really like something to get out to the public after this is adopted, and let them know that that's their target, you know, you know, to go to their school, talk to their principal, make appointment, and they're the best ones, because it is really detailed, and, you know...
Yes, it is very detailed.
Like the LCAP is, you know, to a certain degree. But it is important, if someone's interested, because I would have been one of those parents, you know, explaining to, I, you know, I, my hat's off to them, and I appreciate them taking the time to do that. So, I would love that, if that's okay with, you know, with staff. You know, I'm sure the principals, you know, I haven't had a principal say, no, they're not.
They're all prepared for that, actually. We had a meeting with all of our principals yesterday, and we discussed making sure that copies are available at the front office, so that they would be available to address any questions and concerns. And that's really what we want, just like with the safety plans. We want for the principals to be able to talk anyone through the questions that they might have about their program, because they're really the ones that understand their schools the best.
Well, thank you for that.
Ms. Bartow? Mrs. Bartow?
Yes, so, thank you very much. It was quite detailed, and I, you know, really appreciated the thought that went in on the part of many of the principals. It was clear that the care that was put into that. And also, I think, especially in a year with so many new principals at different schools, it's a really powerful tool to look at their goals for their school site, and talk to their parents, and talk to their communities. And in a couple of the ones that I looked at, it was evident, the kind of things that maybe didn't work out last year, and there were priorities that a principal recognized in their community. So, it was great to see that dynamic approach to such a lengthy and boilerplate document.
Yes, thank you. In fact, what we try to do is leverage our stakeholder input process with the LCAP and the school plan at the same time, because we really feel that what's happening at the school level is what the parents care about, and by gathering the themes of their input, we can really generalize that to the LCAP.
Ms. Anderson?
I wanted to thank you, because you do so much work with this. And honestly, to be able to know on page 85 of a certain school, it's really impressive. So, I thank you for that, and I, for walking the principals through it. And I also thank you that there's printed copies at the schools. I think that that's huge. Parents want to be able to have access. I disagree that it's, people want more information than less information, so, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
That being said, do we have a motion to approve?
Actually, I just have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have my light on.
It was like...
You and Mrs. Yelsey.
I don't know the answer. I'm just wondering, in light of, you know, saving paper and those type of things with just making copies, some people want a paper copy. What is the problem? Is there a problem with putting it online? Does it take up, I'm not super computer savvy on space, but...
They're ranging anywhere from the low end of about 65 pages, all the way up to, I think our longest was about 135.
Yeah.
There's no problem with it.
Does that take a lot of, I mean...
Right. So, when we're thinking about the context of the school, we would really like to encourage people to go and talk to the principals. And sometimes what happens is if people don't get the context and have the chance to really understand, they can misunderstand, because it is very, very detailed. There's a lot of things in there. And they may want to know, well, why did you get this result and not that result? So, at this time, what we really want to do is encourage folks to go to the school sites. And should, through stakeholder input, it come to pass that that's not sufficient, we'll definitely take a look at it. But we really do want to foster that engagement at the school level, and we feel like this is a good step.
But if you get a copy, you know, I mean, if somebody wants a, they could get a copy...
There's a copy available, not, not stacks of copies.
Oh, I thought you were making copies.
No, no, that way they can go in, and they can review it, and they can discuss it with the principal.
I see what you're saying, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that would take like a corner of...
Well, I know. That's why I was like, what?
Most people, yeah. Most people want to read it, I think, to just have their questions answered, and I'm pretty sure nobody wants to read through the tomes. But if anybody wants to talk about the LCAP...
I agree with you, but it's just so easy, even if it's just on each individual school site. But again, I'm not an expert in how much space things take. I have so much stuff on my computer, and it still runs, and so, I don't, it just didn't seem like a big deal. But... No, but I think you're, part of my, because we did have discussion over the years. We've been doing this every year, and, you know, and there's a lot of work from the individual sites, along with the district, you know, helping with the different departments. And it is really something that I think the principals are, you know, for the most part, very proud of. And so, maybe if they went through with their, you know, with their PTAs and PFOs and foundations and walked them through it, it would just be an introduction to it, because it is, you know, what does this mean when you get through? And if you don't have the benefit, you know, of having that, I'm not saying, don't give them the information. I am not saying that. No, I know. But I think that I welcome our community, you know, at least in my zone, you know, and I'm sure it's the same in every zone, that people really genuinely want, you know, to be educated. And we are in the business of that, and our leadership at the site is perfect, you know. So, your concern is by just the average parent getting the, going online and looking up things, that they won't really understand what, I mean, how do you go, how do you have a meeting with a principal, but you really haven't reviewed it? And I see awesome back there.
It's really not about technological capacity.
So, it's not about the space.
No, it's not about space.
It's strictly about the concern that if you just have this, this, this document, and you pull it up, that you're gonna, I mean, to me, I would look at it if I had questions, and I would go meet with the principal. That's just me. I don't know. What does everybody else think? We can't decide on it. I've already shared what I think.
I think, your light was on first. Why don't you go ahead?
Well, I can comment on that. I think that some people may misinterpret the data, or not, or see something and not understand what they're reading. I think it would be better, if they have questions about anything, just to go in and talk to the principal, and have the principal take them through. I think that would be a great thing, to sit down with the principal at a school. And speaking of that, what I have my light on for was, when you next have a principal's meeting, if you could thank the principals for doing this. I know at their school sites, it's a school site plan, and it looks like other people helped out, and maybe they help out. But I get the strong feeling that it is the principal who spends all the time writing these reports, and they are pretty amazing. So, please thank them.
And before I bent to Mrs. Flor, there's parts of it that are very easy to understand. There's parts of it that are like the beginning of the budget book that says, here's our school, we're wonderful, this is how many kids go here. A lot of it is populated with data from the state, and we know the state doesn't care whether we understand their data. So, that part would definitely, I would have wanted, and speaking as principals, absolutely. Thank them, because we know that the LCAP has to be done in the fall, and the site, safety plans have to be done in the fall, and these have to be done in the fall, and that we're hoping that after winter break, they can see their families again, as will you. It is a daunting task, but as you said, we have so many new principals, this isn't a great way to know. My other comment was, don't school site councils have to, okay, so, there is a group at the school that does have to approve them, so they've read them in detail. And, well, every school site council I was able to chair, I hoped I could just say, isn't it great, will you sign it? No, I need more copies, and can we do it? And that's good, that's what you want. And I would let, my first crack would probably be to PTA and say, hi, I made this, it's in the office, if you want to come talk to me, I can talk to you. So, it's up to the sites to do that, to share it that way, but, and I'm sure there's also copies will be available, at least in Spanish, for the schools that are totally, are very heavily bilingual. So, we probably don't have Lithuanian. I keep asking, because I have a daughter-in-law now that's Lithuanian. Mrs. Flor?
I think, Vicki, what we talked about also was that it's like any email that you get, and you read it, and there's no tonality. It's black and white. What was said may have been there, but there's a nuance to it. And I think it's an opportunity for the, you know, the words are carefully selected, but they can be misread in there. And I think it's an opportunity for our community to get to know their schools, and their principal to shine, and really explain those nuances, because, you know, it may be that it's red on the dashboard, it may show a red, but it, when they explain it and say, well, it's red, it's one student. It's one student. It's not, it's not 50% of the students, it's one student that caused the red. So, that can't be explained on 68 pages when they're just looking at the dashboard. It really takes a one-on-one.
That one student.
And that one-on, that one-on-one.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying they should... Wouldn't have a one-on-one, I don't want to beat this horse.
So... Mrs. Bartow?
I don't want to beat the horse either. But as the parent on the board, I like the idea of having it online. I understand that we want to communicate, because in some of the plans I read, they're dropping, you can only have so many goals. You can't have five goals. In some sections, you can have one or the other. Some of the plans I read, they're dropping what would seem to be a very important goal in favor of something else that is important at their school site. So, I love the idea of having the access, but I also think it is so important for that parent to talk to the principal, because at a school where they're maybe dropping one goal in favor of, say, more emphasis on orchestra, that's wonderful. But if you're the parent who only reads the first part, you're gonna go, oh, no, like, that's a really important part. So, I know the model's changing, maybe when we're going through that new model next year for that we do like a cover sheet that we send out, that is part of like next year's plan, that's just like, you know, here's what it means, here's why you should talk to your principal, and here's the goal we're highlighting. And like, maybe that school site does the goal we're highlighting for the next year.
That being said, do I have a motion to approve the school? Do we do that? I don't have a rundown as who did who.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Yelsey. Thank you, Mrs. Black. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I follow up with a sports analogy?
Yes.
Because I, you know, as a middle school teacher, I always use sports. Did you know that all football teams have a playbook? Right? And it's the most important document on that team. So, all footballs have a playbook. Did you know that when a football player gets traded from one team to another, they don't, can't read that playbook? And it's a whole idea of context and how that, that plan is designed.
The new team, they can't, they didn't understand it.
They can't read the new, they don't understand the new team, even though they may run the same plays, they have a different context, they have a different set of priorities, they have a different way of calling the same play. Because, and so, the most difficult problem, especially the quarterback, if he gets traded to a new organization, is to learn the new playbook. So, our budgets are like playbooks, and not every single one, even though they seem similar, they have, just like everybody said, there are new nuances, and like Mrs. Bartow said, there are reasons you pick certain priorities and don't, and it's always really, really good to have a coach to help you.
Cool. Alrighty. 18A, Dr. Navarro.
Okay, I have a little, a long story background to give you here.
Well, that's interesting. 19.
19D.
I am so sorry. It's on my little thing, it's 19, and then it goes into 18th again. It's just a typo. 19B. Go, Dr. Navarro.
Okay, so, I'm gonna introduce this item, and I'm gonna go back, way back to the Great Recession. During the Great Recession, those board members that were on, on the board will remember there were many casualties that befell the budget acts. You know, we lost categoricals, we lost funding for programs like busing and transportation. One of the casualties was our ROP program. It used to be that the state would funnel ROP money through us, that we would pass on to ROPs. And then, because they were getting state money, they were a state agency. They had all the same rules and expectations as the school district. Well, as a result of the Great Recession, the state took all that money away, because they had to fill all of the necessary funding needs. And so, they just took that money away. And I remember Mrs. Hume's predecessor coming into my office, saying, hey, we have to have an agreement now. We have to have a joint powers agreement, because you don't have to give us this money. And so, we want to continue to offer these services. So, our very first agreement was that, pretty much that way, she came to each of the five schools, and we signed an agreement that we all agreed to, to continue funding us at the level that was prior to the state taking us away.
Five school districts.
Five school districts. Oh, did I say five schools? I meant five school districts. Thank you, Ms. Black. So, and we have been in a huge transition. And, you know, as a principal, and a principal who was right next to Presidio, I really loved having the ROP program right next to me, because I could send as many kids as I could to their programs, as well as the programs we offered on our campus. And I'll tell you why I like that. Because ROP, they provide instructors who come from that world. So, if you want to learn about nursing, you work with an instructor who's a nurse. They have experience. So, as a teacher, we get hired on our credential and our, and our, and our transcript. As an ROP teacher, you get hired on your resume, and what you've done, and what you've been able to produce. So, it brings a different, a different perspective to learning. Our kids, when they go to automotive class, they are learning from top mechanics. They're not learning from somebody who learned about mechanics in a classroom. They are actually working with people who are working with current technology and current demands on the job. So, it plays a very, very important role for us to bring richness and depth to our pathway programs. And that's been our partnership the last few years, is they've been enhancing our pathways, our CTE pathways. We have this great partnership, but it costs. We have to pay for their teachers, there are services they provide in support of those teachers. And, and so, you know, we got together, and I want to, I want to thank Carol Hume for her leadership this past year. She brought us together in the spring and said, how are we gonna do this? And everybody was there, and we all had skin in the game, and every superintendent from every district, we sat with Carol, and we had some pretty difficult discussions. And I got to tell you, she really came and bared everything. It used to be, and so, for example, today you approve the agreement for our 1920 program. And that's the way it's always been. We've always approved that right about this time, because that's when we learn how many sections we're gonna have, and what the pass-through's gonna be, and so, everybody's, you know, everything can be accurate on the budget. Our new agreement has us, she's giving us an expected cost and budget a year, a semester in advance. So, now we know ahead of time what we're gonna be paying for, and what we have to pay for. And then, what we also have, we also have an opportunity to work with ROP and decide if there's 10% of, up to 10% of classes, whether we want to continue them or not. So, we can move our focus, and we can also ask them to, working with them, how can we modify or personalize the program to better enhance our pathways? And what the big issue was, and I'm just gonna be honest, is we wanted to know the cost, because we never knew the cost. And I know that I was a thorn in Carol's side, asking her, well, what's the budget? How do you figure this out? How do you do that? Well, when she came down and went with all of us, she provided all that. It was all laid out for all the superintendents. We sat there, we worked with her. And she really sacrificed a lot of what her, her team had in reserves to make this possible. So, I'm really proud that we now know what a unit's costing us. And a unit, what I mean by that is a section. And I, we know that how many of our kids are in our sections, how many of the kids from other schools are in our sections, and how many of our kids are in their sections. So, for example, the automotive program, we have, what, 14, 15, or maybe 19 of our students in Huntington Beach's ROP automotive program. They've got 10 in our fire science program. So, that's a mutually beneficial thing. And I want to thank, thank Carol for bringing us all together and building that camaraderie and, and support between the districts because we all are sharing kids. They're all going to our after-school programs. And so, this is going to be a very different process now. It's going to be very transparent. We're going to know right about now what our costs are going to be for the following year. I know I've kept Jeff involved. And I know that that cost me some time. You know, Carol would say, "Are you done yet? Are you done?" "Well, I haven't heard talk to Jeff yet. I haven't talked to Jeff yet." Wasn't going to do anything without Jeff.
Smart man.
And, and, and so, he would say, "Yeah, this works out. This is accurate. This is good." So, what you're approving tonight is the new model. The new model. So, we will know exactly the cost. And I know that Carol's made a commitment to continue to work with all the superintendents to continue to get us the best cost factor for the greatest service for our students. And, and I know that she's also allowed us to ask her to give higher salaries to hard-to-hire ROP teachers. For example, we keep losing our engineering science teachers, our computer science engineering class teachers. They go to private industry because they get paid so much more. And Carol's allowed us to raise the bar on salary, even though we have to pay for it. But we're going to be paying for continuity and consistency in that program. So, I bring to you the new agreement. And it is a complicated document. So, if you have questions, be happy to. But also, if you want to spend more time talking about this document, we can do that anytime. We can spend, go into depth. And I'm sure Carol and her team would be happy to come, come someday too and just go through the whole document in detail with you. And I know that I'm just boring Mrs. Flore because she's been, she's been getting these reports as your crop representative for the last six months. But again, my hat's off to Carol Hume who really was courageous and, and really bared her, her, her information to all the superintendents. And I think we all responded with a real positive, "Yeah, we're here as a team and we're going to work together because there's really great benefits for our kids here."
Okay, are we going to hear from?
Yes. I'm going to ask Michael to come up and ask Carol to come up and maybe share some more information, some more details.
I know we typically move second and then listen, but I like listening and then we'll move in second.
Well, good evening, President Matoye, Superintendent Navarro, Board of Trustees, Cabinet Members, and all of the other attendees still in the audience. Thank you for your kind remarks, Dr. Navarro. But he's shortchanging himself in all of this. He was very instrumental in bringing everybody together and helping us find consensus. And then, I also have to thank our trustee Flore for her continued support for all the years she's been on our school board. She's been just incredible and a wonderful advocate for students and our program. So, I'd like to start by thanking the two of you. And then, I know we've had tremendous support from the board and the staff at Newport Mesa. We've offered, worked in collaboration with the, the team here. And I'm really proud of the offerings that we have in the district. And as Superintendent Navarro indicated, it was a very complicated funding system that we had before. And we listened to all of the partners and they wanted it to be transparent and equitable and simple in this day and age when everything is so complicated. And so, I feel really good about our new model. And it is, I think, there's a lot more flexibility in it for all the partners. And again, we're just here to serve the best interests of your districts and our students. And we will continue to look at the new funding model and assess it each year to see if we need to make some adjustments to it. I mean, we've been funded one way since 1971. And so, this is a big change for all of us. And we think we've covered all the bases, but sometimes you miss something. So, we will look at it annually with all of the districts and ensure that everybody's needs are still being met. Did you have anything you want to say?
No, that's good.
And I don't know if, anyone has any questions?
Lights are on.
Oh, goodie.
Mrs. Flore.
Okay.
I, I do want to say a couple of things. This has been an ongoing process for about two years when the ROP board started looking at our funding because as, we were funded strange, Lee, because we had different types of teachers. We had district teachers teaching ROP. We had ROP teachers, ROP. Then we had ROP teachers that we hired district, I mean, it was just a whole mess. And so, we started talking to it, talking. But it took, we brought an outside consultant in with School Services to start the process, the conversations. And then, it got to the point where our board said, "You need to talk to the suits." Because many of the district people were in, just, they were looking at bottom-line number, they were looking at numbers and not students and what we were offering. So, it really did take the superintendents. And I agree, Carol, it was thanks to Dr. Navarro in getting, making sure that there was some behind-the-scenes talking to those individuals. But I, I do have to give our district kudos because we started this process by establishing the Career, College and Career Office. Not every district has that. We are the only district, in fact, that has had it for five years. So, that really started us. We are far and above, so far ahead of every other district in our joint powers agreement. And as you look at the numbers, we are far and above the greatest, we offer the greatest number of sections that we service our, our students. And, and so, it has been a process. There is going to be some sacrifices being made at the, at the ROP level. And we're going to be dealing with that because we are going into, we are significantly deficit spending. And we're going into, into our reserves to, to manage this.
Crop reserves?
Crop reserves.
Thank you.
The $28,000 per section is an average. There are, there are sections that are way more than that. And there are sections that are less than that. But we felt that the $28,000 was a reasonable amount of money. That includes the instructor. Our instructors are not on, they're not union-contracted. They don't, they're not, they're not a union. So, which provides us the flexibility to, if, if we don't have enough students and the district doesn't have enough students, we can, we can, we can drop that class and move it to something else. And there have been times. And our, our breadth of offerings has expanded because we take a look at what the workplace is about. And so, we meet that. And I thank Michael, who sits on, on the Steering Committee. So, he's always there, having conversations and meeting with the principals. So, I think this is a good deal for us. And not to mention that we just, we're picking up another great deal with Lisa Snowden.
Imagine my surprise on that one.
Happy for all of you.
Yeah. Not happy for ROP. Which hat should I wear?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a good move for her, so.
Mrs. Black.
Yeah, I, I know how much work has gone because, you know, like, Mrs. Flore, this is a passion of mine for secondary. And congratulations, you know, to working it out. I was holding my breath, you know? And it's such a positive thing. I believe that this is the future of secondary, you know, is having a, a strong part of the pathway, you know, in industry. So, it's, it's really important to me. However, I know how things go and how our calendars go and whatnot. And I'm going to support this. But on the, you know, stipulation that we have a study session, I, I felt like I knew this stuff inside and out. And, and I pretty much did the old. But there are a lot of, not necessarily changes, but, and not necessarily restrictions, but, you know, there, it's, I don't know how to explain it because I don't understand it. And if I don't, I know that my, you know, colleagues don't. And we've talked about having a study session. And, and I know that, you know, now that Dr. Navarro has gone through with the other superintendents, I have talked to other districts that are in fact doing study sessions. I believe we really need to commit to, this is huge. And in order for us to be successful, I think every person on this board needs to fully understand where we're at, where we're going, and, you know, and also the future. I mean, we have a huge future possibilities with grants. And, I mean, we just approved another, you know? I mean, you know, that's, it's been really wonderful. So, I would like a commitment, you know, and not a year from January. It needs to be, because I do believe that we have to have this in. You know, if we're, if we're going to make any changes or whatnot, I think it, what I read, and I may have misunderstood it, but by February, we need to, if we are going to make any changes working, you know, with anything, we need to know.
Well, that's, that's in terms of courses.
Well, no, I understand that, but we don't know. I mean, I don't know the, you know, criteria for that. So, I mean, I'm reading it and it's, and it's pretty laid out. But, but it's, I, I think we all need, at least this board member. I can only speak for me.
And I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
So.
Before I go to Mrs. Yelsey, I just want to thank the whole concept of ROP. One of the questions we get, and I will say we get often, is, "Well, what happened to shop classes? And what happened to the things?" I mean, I was, I liked being able to make that coffee table for my family when I was in high school. That's where I got my love for electronics. And my response is, there's no way with today's technology, school districts can afford to keep up. Auto shop isn't taking apart an engine and putting it back together again.
It's not the boys of the hood anymore.
It's hooking it up to the computers and trying to figure all this stuff out. I can do that job. I can't do the job now. Without that, we wouldn't have that piece of practical learning that's quite obvious what you have to do. And that is a love of so many of our students. That, I mean, there's things like graphic design. It doesn't have to be our, one of our shop classes. So, I am grateful for ROP from its inception, its collaboration to keep because we are much richer being five districts than just one. And I'm, I'm really glad that we can, as a group, offer these classes to our students that none of us on our own could possibly. But believe me, I ask. I wa, I keep saying, "I want one." Of course you do. But I do. She does. This is Yelsey. Your turn.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for this. And also thank Michael and CTE and the entire group that, as Mrs. Flore says, has been working for the last five years because many people think that these ROP classes are only offered maybe at a couple of schools or for kids who may not even be interested in four-year colleges, which is not the case. And if you look at the list of programs throughout our district, they're pretty evenly spread out among all four of our comprehensive high schools. So.
It wasn't anything you were saying. It wasn't anything you were saying. I was mumbling and I'm sorry. I distracted you.
Anyway, so, I just, I, I think it's important that people in the community realize that it does affect students across the board in our district.
I was mumbling about technology. And just so that you're aware, just in case, because I thought, gee, if we're the only one and we're that great, we should be getting a golden bell for this. And I probably involves mounds of paperwork. So, in advance, I'm apologizing. Oh, with that.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Flore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Sherri will work with Carol's assistant and will get something scheduled probably in early January. If that's okay. Carol, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
Are we getting ready for WASC, too?
It's the following spring.
I don't think you have to go.
But yes, we're, and may I just say, I think you're now the fifth district to approved it. So, we're good.
Hallelujah.
We're good to go. Good to go. And thank you, Dr. Barmerster, for the, for the tidier update on the classes that we requested. So, we appreciate that.
Can we get that posted on, on the website? Because I think it's.
Why?
Well, because.
With the clarification? The numbers of students.
Five hundred.
For example, at Estancia, we have 538 students. Newport Harbor has 618 students. Corona Del Mar, 248. And Costa Mesa, 539. That's pretty impressive. And that's not just, that's, they count hours differently in students. Do we have a CTE portion on our webpage?
Do we have a CTE?
Section, a CTE? That would be a good place for it. It will be soon?
Yes.
Dr. Sur, you missed our wonderful, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to respond first?
I was just going to say that I sent it to Michael because I wanted him to cross-check and to make sure I didn't miss any as well. I just pulled those out of areas from each school.
Oh, good.
There's a little bit of work, I think, that needs to be done on it.
To make it easier for them. Perfect. Dr. Sur, you missed our wonderful elementary portion of systems. So, if you'd like to share with us what you were going to say, we'd all love to hear it.
Yeah, I didn't get to hear all the reports, but I'm certainly happy to give a little bit of information as far as my perspective yesterday on the board's study session. I really appreciate the work that we're doing around systems in regards to elementary education. And really, I thought about this, four different entities that are working very closely together. District personnel, teachers on special assignment, principals, and teachers. And there really is a nice cohesion and a nice system occurring in which district personnel, examples yesterday were Vanessa Galey and Laura Dale Pash working very closely with teachers on special assignment and working with principals, especially in our Title I schools. And along with that, you have TOSSAs working very tightly with teachers and TOSSAs working very tightly with principals. I thought that both Ray Elementary School with Dr. Cox and Victoria School with Dr. Peralta really went into some depth and really dug in to some of those fine nuanced pieces in regards to three areas. Core access for students to complex text, which is a very important thing for all students, to have the access to be reading passages on a routine basis of text that is appropriate to their grade level. And then, in regards to the reading foundational skills, I really appreciate the work that we have in regards to systems. Martha, I think, asked a question about the concept of master schedules when, in elementary schools. And it really is fascinating to look at a school and what they design in looking at their master schedule in regards to where is it that SIPS and reading foundational skills rotations are occurring for students? And also, within that master schedule, another, another arm, if you will, is English language development. Where is it that designated ELD is fitting into that master schedule? And not one of those entities, not teachers, not the district office, not the TOSSAs, and not the principals can do it alone. So, when we talk about those systems, it's really all four of those groups working very, very closely together with the support of the board because all of this is impossible without approval of a lot of the different programs and things that we do. So, I just really appreciate where we're at right now. And I, I also appreciate the fact that there's still a lot of work to do. So, this isn't going to stop. We're, it's almost like in some ways, we're just getting started. But it takes the systems to really try to make it happen. So, I left there feeling really good about the work that everyone's doing. And Vanessa Galey and Laura Dale Pash leading that work in English Language Arts and English Language Development is really making a big difference for our students.
That being said, I thought you might want to add to. We had some really good news about some Title I schools that we had, didn't we? Recently, about the nomination, not the, not the finish. But we had four wonderful new pieces of news, right? Didn't you want to take that as part of your report?
Did you guys already discuss that?
Nope. Nope, that's, that's why I was asking.
He's looking to a supernova. Can I say this?
I, I won't ask you if I haven't asked first.
Yeah, no, we, we are very excited to announce that Kelly Brook Elementary School, Sonora Elementary School, and.
Paularino.
Paularino Elementary School.
California.
And California. Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's a, it's really, it's really interesting to look at what the requirements are to meet it. And there's two different categories. And I haven't yet seen the reports of the two different ways that a school can become a California distinguished school. But we, we know that it's very different than the Gold Ribbon Awards. And it's very different than what the previous California distinguished awards look like. So, there's still a little bit for us to learn. But I think what they've done is really raised the bar. So, for those schools to meet the requirements of what now the California distinguished school is asking for, So for those schools to meet the requirements of what now the California Distinguished School is asking for, it's a, it's a pretty rigorous bar. So there's a lot to celebrate in all of those schools. And we're, we're fortunate to have the district working with our consultants as well to help with the grant writing process and making that happen for the school. So we're, they're eligible, we're applying, we're working on it, we have teams working on it. And we're going to be optimistic that it's going to happen for all four.
I want to let you know that many superintendents at our meeting complained about the rigorous selection process because they felt a lot of their high-end schools didn't get recognized. Because now the stakes are a little different. And it's more about what you're doing with your kids than what you achieve. Because it's not, you know, sometimes, sometimes you can have students who are going to do really well despite who's in front of them, like the kids who went through my classes. Or you have kids who really do well because of the work that you're doing at a site. But yeah, there was a lot of, there was a lot of dis, dis, disenchantment with the fact that schools that had perennially been named as distinguished schools were not nominated this time. So we're really proud of our four nominees. And as soon as they get their paperwork in, we'll find out if they make it all the way.
Excellent. Board members, it's time for our report. And if you would like, if you're on a committee and want to give that report simultaneously, I think that's just fine. We haven't done it in a while, Mrs. Snell, we're gonna start with you.
Okay. So one of my committee reports, Newport Mesa Schools Foundation went to their meeting. There was only like five of us there because everybody was out of town for some reason. But we discussed the recent state of the schools breakfast. And they went over what they thought went well and what they thought needed improvement. They love having it at Estancia because it has a really large gym. And so they were able to sell two hundred and eighty-eight seats, which is a lot. They wanted, and they got fifteen thousand dollars in sponsorships. So there was a lot, and they, and they loved working with Mrs. Franco and her team. So it went really well. Also, I wanted to thank Dr. Navarro and Mr. Li Song for meeting with same people. They are refining, updating their grants, what is, what we should be, what they should be funding in grants. In relation to technology, things have changed a lot. And so it was a great opportunity for them to find out what we're providing, what the classrooms really need. And so I think we're gonna make it a yearly thing.
That was a great meeting. They were amazing. Their questions were spot on, and they really, really want to make things work for everybody. So it was a privilege to sit in the room with them. Thank you, thank you for getting us together. That's one of the best meetings we've had with them ever.
It was good. And they, they appreciated all your help and Russell's help, so. Also, I attended the Estancia High School PTSA meeting last night. And I think it was last night, I can't remember. Very recent. And their SRO was there, and he provided a lot of great insight into, for the parents, into what he does, what is important about his relationship with the students, building a good, a good relationship with the police, but also being someone that a student can go to if they see something bad happening. And they, and so they have a trust in the students. And I ran the policeman. And he also talked about his training, they get special training to be in SRO. So that was interesting. Also, went to California and Teewinkle for site visits. And I wanted to thank Mr. Longacre and Dr. DePali. It was really interesting to sit down with them and talk about their goals. And I pretty much just listened. I asked what were some things that we could do to help? And they both really, as I'm sure a lot of elementary school teachers or administration teachers want a full-time social worker, that they really need that support, that part-time is just. But, but they're thankful for everything we do, so I don't want to throw anybody near the bus here. I would like to suggest that we give our student board members some sort of a task. I mean, I, tonight, we talked about coming up with some incentives to take the S back. But I, I think it would be nice as a semester project to come up with something for them to bring back to us from the students, like an issue they'd like us to work on. I mean, I'm open to whatever, maybe you can all think about it. But I would like to see something, they present something to us briefly, not like, you know, like five minutes or, you know, of what they'd like to see, to see us work on, or what is not working. But more with a district, not just in their school, more with a district flair. Okay? And also, I have a suggestion on resolutions. And of course, this is something that everybody else has to think about. I, I really like when the resolutions are introduced separately and somebody gives a two-minute thing about it. Like this is, I, I mean, I can read that deal, but it's nice if, you know, Jeff, Mr. Trader, or somebody, that, something comes up in a resolution, they just talk about what it's about very briefly, and that, and that we vote on it at that time. Rather than just everything coming up and it's mixed up, and the first one's talking about, somebody's talking about the first one or the second one. Anyway, that's just my two cents on that. And finally, I, I'd like to talk about the possibility of changing our February twenty-fifth study session. I would really, I've, and I've gone to this before, I haven't gone in a couple of years, but I would really like to go to Sacramento Safari, and I know Michelle is interested. It's, I, I mean, I've praised this before. It is one of the most comprehensive, your speakers are great about what's going on. And it's, and you're, and it's only one night, so you're in and you're out, it's intensive. But anyway.
Dr. Navarro said.
Okay.
You just want to change your date, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I want to move it to Sacramento.
Ooh, road trip.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll get you up there and back in one day.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you leave like, your plane leaves at like seven-thirty.
Right.
Yeah, you've been before, and then the next day, you rush to the airport, but it's just so good. So, okay, that's it.
Lots.
I know.
Mrs. Garto. All right, so I'm gonna do both. I attended the Newport Heights Jogathon this past week, it was great. First year I didn't run alongside the kids, somehow I got out of that one, which is great. And will be attending Newport Harbor's Spelling Bee as a former Orange County Spelling Bee contestant myself. I'm excited to see that Putnam County Spelling Bee play. And also to attend the Ensign Turkey Trot and then go to Newport L's Jogathon. Talking about legislation, not a ton that's new since the last time that I've talked about, but some good things that I wanted to highlight are the, we do a good job, and especially with the Mental Health Task Force, it's becoming more part of legislation to post bullying and harassment policies. And really have a lot more information about that posted related to preventing that and who, you know, what discrimination looks like. So we've done some good work in that area as well, but it's gonna be part of law that we'll have to make sure that we're in compliance with. And then one thing that I think is great is in terms of student ID cards, we've talked about this for a while, PTA talked about this for a while, is having the suicide hotline on the back of student ID cards. So that law, that bill has passed, so we'll be seeing that coming as well. Then a lot of the other stuff is, oh, one of the things that they highlighted, which I think is a great opportunity for students who are on probation for some reason or another, is the state is now requiring that, per Bill AB nine-eighty-two, that homework be provided to students who are suspended, if they can request that, if they wish. So that's some new updates.
That last part in there. I'm laughing, I can just say, oh, can I have homework, please, please?
I was thinking that too, I was like, okay. But you know, some people, you know, my wish to ask, and if that isn't legally an option to be provided, maybe they wouldn't get that and they miss out. So it's a good support.
You may not want it, but mom may want it.
Thank you. Really quickly, I am really excited that we voted for the resolution for mental health. I think one of the things, we've seen it happen, we've seen a lot of need for it in our schools, but I've been looking at it nationally as well. And Orange County really leads the nation in mental health needs. And so I think having finally the Board of Supervisors release more money, but also our whole board, I think, is really behind supporting our students and our staff as much as possible. So I am really excited about that. I am grateful that we were able to have the students who are English language learners' study session yesterday. And there are still some things that I had more information that I wanted to get. So I wanted to get more information about the full Title I funds and what is allocated to what, and also for the Title III funds. There were certain sections that were actually missing in our budget, so I wasn't sure what the percentages were. So I wanted to go back and check on that. And then I just wanted to read, I handed out to our board members, but I'm not sure if they got a chance to read it because it was deep, like page eight of the CSBAs, it was two years old now, it's from February two thousand sixteen. But when Proposition fifty-eight was voted in, was seventy-three percent of the vote. That changed the conversation from our schools being English-only to really having a bigger push for having multi-language support for a lot of our schools. LA Unified actually has a goal that the kindergarten class starting in two thousand eighteen, nineteen would all be graduating biliterately. And I think it's not just for Westside schools, I think it's something that I was able to visit Norway this year, and they speak five languages and they start in third grade. So I think that overall, having more than one language is a benefit and an asset, like the roadmap points out. But I think to have us really move from the old policy and the old way of doing things from the English learner roadmap. So I'm just gonna read really briefly because we did not get to this yesterday. So the old policy and practice and current practice is prescriptive, mandate-driven, compliance-focused on exactly what schools need. And the new roadmap policy is setting a vision and a mission for California schools with research-based principles to guide local planning and continuous improvement. The old policy and our current practice is K to twelve systems focus. And the English language roadmap is, includes explicit recognition of early childhood education as a crucial part of the system. The old policy is English learners as a Title III issue only, or isolated compliance, the responsibility of only ELD teachers and EL specialists. And the new is English learners as central to practice woven throughout the LCAP, everyone's responsibility. The old being a focus on English proficiency only, the new being a focus on English proficiency plus proficiency in multiple languages, and recognition of the role in home language support in English and overall literacy. The old, one-size-fits-all programs and approaches, the new responsive, responsive to diverse EL needs, which I think we see that particular at our high school level, the need for that. So the old, college and career readiness as a goal, the new, college and career readiness and preparation for civic participation in a global, diverse, multilingual, twenty-first century world. The old, focus on lack of English proficiency, i.e. what the students don't have in deficiency orientation. The new, value and build on the linguistic and cultural assets that our students bring using a culturally responsive curriculum and instruction. The old, there's only two more, no mention of the school climate or of a commitment to schools to be welcoming, safe, and inclusive of our English learners. The new, focus on safe, affirming, and welcoming school climate and culture. The old, ELD as where and how English learners develop English proficiency. The new model, language development in and through content, integrated across the curriculum, integrated ELD, along with designated ELD, we're doing that. Structured English immersion as a default program, or English learners have choice of research-based language acquisition programs, including options for developing proficiency in multiple languages. And the last, the old, no focus on knowledge and skills of leadership and administration regarding ELs, and the new, explicit commitment to leadership knowledgeable and responsive to our English learners. So I am real excited to hear that we are starting to put together LCAP parent resource packets. I think that's something huge for our parents to be able to know exactly how, what is, what their children will be tested on. But I just, I'm excited about the first steps, but we have some ways to go. So I'm glad that we have the roadmap ahead of us. Thank you, thank you for listening.
I will give my committee report first. I'm on the wellness committee, and we only meet twice a year. So it's Dale Ellis, who is a head of Nutrition Services, giving updates, and people who work with her, and some of our outside partners. So she gave an update, and this is how I knew about the meals. In the summer food service, we served fourteen thousand lunches and six thousand breakfasts at Ray, Costa Mesa High School and at the Costa Mesa Public Library, which is a lot. And the leftovers are all taken to nonprofits, so it goes to good use. The human, one of the things that came out from the Human Relations Task Force, and I remember when they discussed this, was they requested of Dale that she include cultural awareness in the menus.
Right.
And so she started doing that, and just in November. But she started with World Kindness Day and with Dia de los Muertos. And so she's gonna continue to do that throughout the year with different events, which is really nice. They are always working on new menus because quite often, especially elementary school kids, don't like menus. And they're working on some really cool things for snacks, like goldfish and yogurt.
Ooh.
I mean, they didn't have this way back then, but they really do try to. I know, they really do try to come up with items that, that the kids would like. So I think that's true, that, that they will eat. Pam Williams, who works with Dale, is amazing in what she does at all our school sites. And as she says, she is willing to go anywhere for nutrition education. So any school who wants her to come out, talk to parents, talk to the kids, she's more than willing to do. And schools should take advantage of that. And one of the outside partners who was there was the American Heart Association. They have a Kids' Heart Challenge, and they're inviting any school to participate, and it's free of charge. They will come out and do a program like at, in Flag Deck, or whenever the schools want it, about the Kids' Heart Challenge. And it promotes wellness, kindness, kindness challenges, and aligns with STEM. So Pam was going to contact all the principals about that. I took the information and gave it to the principals who were at the CDM Zone PAC. So they're all aware of it, and Anderson already participates. But it's a great program and it's free, it doesn't cost anything, and it's really good for the kids. So then, moving along with that, we had it at the Corona Del Mar Zone PAC. And for those of you who are not aware, it is a program that we have in the CDM Zone that includes all the principals of all the elementary schools, middle school, the high school, and all the PTA presidents of those selective schools. And we had, it is, I just noticed, Carol Crane is in the audience. It's chaired this year by Carol at CDN, at CDM. And we have a, we had a really robust conversation about parents being involved. And I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that's something that's really bothersome to me right now because our community especially is, has really been affected by the loss of so many kids very recently and in the last couple of years. And in fact, when we went around the room and talked about it, some of the principals who have really been effective had got very emotional about it. And they too want something done. And one of the things that's happening is affecting this, but not because of this. As part of Challenge Success, they have a book club. And this month, they're reading The Collapse of Parenting. It's by Len Sax, I believe is his name, he's a psychologist. And it really is, it's a must-read for probably not only high school parents, but also every elementary school parent. And my feeling about all this is, we can talk to the high schools about what we can do because the elephant in the room, which was mentioned then, is, at the, at this meeting, was permissive parents and parties at their houses. And something has to be done. And we can do as a board or a district what we can to help educate and inform parents and help them find solutions, but they've got to be part of the solution as well. And I feel really strongly about it. I bought a copy of the book and gave it to each of the elementary principals because I thought if they could get, if they could read it and get into it and invite. and invite their parent community to either come to the CDM Book Club, or do something on their own, and they, all the schools pledge to do something within the next, this school year, to talk about this issue with their parents. But it's time that we really need to do something, because I don't think any of us wanna see another child in this community lost, so. That's my report on that. And, on a little happier note, I attended Mrs. Matoye as well, the Reflections exhibit over at Sanborn. I don't know if anybody else is here, we were here at the same time, last week. And the entries were pretty amazing, they were very special. And I also was a judge at Newport Coast, so it was fun to see one of the paintings that I judge very highly, she got a first place, so that was nice. And this weekend, I stopped by the Newport Harbor High School Holiday Boutique, where 15% of the proceeds were given back to the high school. They had, I don't know, they must have had, like, 50 vendors there. I did some damage, I helped them out, so it was really good.
Good for you.
That's my report.
Okay, real, first and foremost, you know, Tamara Banks was one of our Teachers of the Year, and I was so lucky, you know, to go to the Disneyland Hotel and celebrate. And I sat with Colleen Tollis as well, she was another, she's department head at Ensign, and teacher. And Tamara was gorgeous in her beautiful gown, and really enjoyed the time. And I know Dr. Navarro, and Michelle, and I, and it is lovely, it's long, but it's, you know... But they do a really good job, you know, celebrating the teachers, so that. And then also, Costa Mesa United Sports Committee, I'm not gonna get into detail, other than to say, their committee, that November is Planning Month for the district. So if you are sports, and community, and schools, and whatnot, that is the month that they are, our district collectively looks at the coming year, you know, for sports. And I think it'll be really helpful, again, kudos to, you know, Mr. Bauermeister, and also to Lance, part of our M&amp;O. They really, you know, it's really made a big difference, because if everybody's on the same page, it really helps those, you know, organizations, and coaches, and athletic directors. And so really, I think it's great to have that, at least target. I know we're gonna not be 100% all the time, but at least, you know, we're gonna get started there. So, kudos to them for that. And there was a lot of other things that maybe Charlene could talk about.
No, I'm happy with you doing it.
Okay, well that was, I mean, I think that's a, you know, really huge deal. And then we also got to attend, we have a network that we do quarterly with all the different utilities. The city of Costa Mesa and the district participates, so we have, you know, the Costa Mesa, no, Mesa Consolidated Water, and we also have the...
Special District Liaison.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, but what's really great is we learn a lot. We learn, I'm learning now what roads are gonna be closed in the future, because they're gonna be doing major drain repairs. And, but what's really impressive is that they're collaborative, you know,ly working together to update, so that we, you know, in future, that we aren't, you know, in a disaster mode, and having, you know, things that we can't, you know, rely on, I guess. And so, good for them. So they're working through that, and we shared what we were doing, you know, in our district. And they had lots of good questions. And then we also had a lot of conversation about the homeless, and what the city was doing. And I shared a little bit about Newport, City of Newport, because, you know, I went to a couple of their meetings, enough to be dangerous, because it is very... I mean, it's not just political, it is, you know, what to do, and I know we all think about that. So, they're doing, I believe they're, you know, both our cities are doing a good job at addressing it, you know, as best they can. We may have to step into it, because I know I couldn't be more proud of our district, and how we support our children. So, and speaking of that, we also had our Student Advisory, Superintendent Student Advisory. And so, Mrs. Snell, I have to report to you that we have two representatives from every high school, comprehensive high school, Back Bay, early college. And they are tasked at this point to bring back their top three items, which is district-wide. They're a very collaborative group. We host every month, Dr. DiAgostino, you know, runs the meeting. And, you know, the students are just, you know, very confident. And they really help facilitate the beach cleanup and the Kindness Week. And we have t-shirts, you get a free t-shirt, I believe, when you come on Saturday, the 23rd. And, and they just, you know, they're really putting their hearts and actual, you know, commitments to it. And their number-one concern, always, every year in the past, has been food. Food, you know, on the campus is always the number one.
Oh, right.
This year, it was not. And, you know, you know, the number one, as they went around, is with student safety and wellness, and their deep compassion and empathy for students is remarkable. And so, I'm gonna be really curious, also talking about the collegiate calendar, you know, and less stress. And they talked about the parents, you know, parties and concerns, and drugs, you know, those kind of things. So, you know, they're, they're a pretty dynamic group, so. And, and I did go to Reflections, and I always get stuck at the very, because I love reading all of the... As a matter of fact, all of the poems, and actually, there was a couple that, you know, I was, I couldn't, you know, I mean, tearfully, you know, talking about experiences. And my first question is, is this their personal experience? And so you always wonder, you know, if it's fiction or not, you know, so, because some of them are pretty bad. But once I get through the reading, then, you know, you go into the art, and it's just amazing. And they had a whale there that I just, did you see the whale? I thought that was really good. And the whale had all the different things that we pick up, you know, in the ocean that isn't supposed to be in the ocean, so. They just did a good, so I always encourage everyone, I always go towards the end. And, so I can read it, and I can, so, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Flor. Well, a couple of things. First of all, I wanna, again, I loved the deep dive, and I wanna thank, but I wanna give a special thanks and shout-out to Mike Shaka, who took my rant, very graciously. Once again, of my rant about the inequity at T-Winkle and Ensign, and their lack of a block scheduling. And so as a result, kids don't get as many elective opportunities as the two...
As the high schools.
As 712s. And then you have the kids that are having support and intervention, losing those electives, because they're in special classes. So, I apologize to Mike, and thank him for, he knew it was coming, though. He knows that. But it was outstanding, and it was great. And I would look, I also look forward to having more conversations about the Summer Academy, because I think this year was such a, was such a life-changing experience, especially for me to hear those kids talk about their culture, and their roots, and sharing their story. And I hope that that gets sort of embedded into their classes, because it was just, that was just phenomenal in that. It's been a great, once again, our kids are phenomenal actors, actresses. Char and I were, I went to The Crucible, which is a heavy show to begin with. It's like, oh, okay, and long. But it was fabulous at Costa Mesa, it was just outstanding. And then I had the opportunity to go to Corona Del Mar and see the eighth grade, A Show of Hands, which is the puppet one. Darling, I took my two little ones, my eight and six-year-old. And they actually, they actually got part of the jokes, and it was really very cute, and they loved it, and it was fabulous to see. And it was a huge cast, huge cast, it was just great.
It was middle school?
The middle school.
She's so inclusive.
And it's just, it was fabulous. And then, a couple of things. We have got a real find in Angela Hess, Alan Hess. I mean, we, there were three of us who had the opportunity to see her in action, first time out with, she's gonna be handling SAR, and so she was there. Just phenomenal opportunity, she's just gonna be outstanding. And I'm anxious to hear how she's gonna be talking about restructuring possibly, and taking some of it back to the high schools as a SAR process before. I think Tim told this, said it best from Estancia High School, that we are just, I mean, it is, there's lots of kids, and we're just taking, we don't have enough time to deal, we're only dealing with 20...
And start with elementary.
And starting with, you know, needing to start with elementary. So, those are, and then finally, I'll just do a brief prop. You've heard about enough prop, and I'll send you some more information. But we also got a new star, we just approved the hiring of Lisa Snowden. Lisa Snowden is former Police Chief Dave Snowden's daughter-in-law. She was at ROP for a long time, and she is coming over to support college and career in our district. I'm really sad to see her go at ROP, but I'm really thrilled that she's coming to us! And not to another district! So that's, we have a real winner in that one, so. It's really sad for us, though. And I really appreciate the support of the ROP. They are, they are doing phenomenal work, and most of our classes are now, I would say, what, 50%, 60% of our classes are A through G? So we're, they're high-end classes, so we're really excited about that. And then I'll let Char, and then, we've got a, we have a show.
We're, no, it's not a show, it's not a show.
A share, I said.
A share, oh, we do have a share.
It's a circus.
Individually. This was my, I was asked by Oasis to represent Newport Mesa at the Oasis, which is a senior center in Newport Beach. And for anyone who's interested, you don't have to live in Newport Beach, and you also don't have to be a senior, but it's a really wonderful opportunity. My job, I was told, is just to tell people how great Oasis is, and I don't have any problem with that, because I'm hoping to go see Hamilton with them, and they have courses. I'm hoping to put my husband to work teaching one, so, I can know where he's at for a few nights, and then he can be busy. And so, it's a really wonderful place, and they do great things, so I check off that, I did that. Happened, this time it happened, that there were two wonderful events that involved Sonora Elementary. And one was their Veterans Day Celebration, which, there are many Veterans Day celebrations. Raise your hand if there was one in your area, so it's gotta be all of us, right. The most touching part is when we have veterans there to celebrate. And it's grandma, and when they're introduced, it's not just rent a veteran for the day, it's Billy's grandmother, and Mary's aunt, and uncle, and it's just so touching. And one of the things they do at Sonora, which I, kudos to the veterans for sitting through it, is every class passes by and gives each veteran a thank-you note, or a flower, or something. And when you do the whole school, that's a long stand. And I'm always impressed by the first-grade class that has memorized the preamble to the Constitution. Because when you do it in first grade, if mom and dad are smart, they'll have their kids talk about it, so that they remember forever. Good old memorization things are kind of fun, and so I really enjoyed that. And then last night, I was at City Hall, because Sonora was selected to be the Artist School in Residence for this quarter, and they had a reception, they had an outstanding turnout. There were over 30 people there, and in addition to that, they also have replaced, although I really did like the things they had in Conference Room A, which showed the history of Costa Mesa, and now they're demonstrating some adult art in the Costa Mesa Conference Room. And it just goes to show that the city of Costa Mesa, who on their logo says, "City of the Arts, Walks the Talk." So if you know of an elementary school that would like that in Costa Mesa, sorry, Newport Beach, please tell your school's principal to contact City Hall, so that they can share the wealth. Okay, and that being said, Mrs. Flor and I...
I didn't do D-LAC, I was waiting for that after.
Oh, but you, well...
Do you want me?
When I introduced it, I said, "Please give your board reports at the same time."
Yes, but I had it written down.
Oh, we had D-LAC, we'll do ours last, D-LAC.
We had our first D-LAC meeting of the year, two Thursdays ago, Wednesdays ago. And they, we covered needs assessments for them to review from last year. So the parents look through, and they're gonna be sharing those at their school sites. And then, it was a fun opportunity for people who want to be on the board of D-LAC this year. There were four or five people that stood up to be the president or a parliamentarian.
Wow, nice.
So they will be voting next time. And then, the last piece too, that was covered, was the trail for resolution. So if people have an issue that comes up at their school, the process, and so, they would be equipped to share that at their school's Ewak meetings.
Fabulous, okey-dokey. So, Mrs. Flor...
So, the walking spree is over.
Seven weeks ago, yes.
So, on September 30th, of course, before September 30th, I issued a challenge to the board to join me and walk our schools. And yes, we got that.
I told you, I only walk on vacation.
Char did jump in and join me, and we have walked, and she'll give you the thing. But also, Michelle did on her own, and so did Karen on her own, and we have those numbers also.
I have stats.
So we have stats. But we did do some observations, so we had a great time walking, we solved...
We solved so many problems.
We solved so many problems.
Oh, and Jeff, we spent the entire budget while we were out there. Because we'd walk by a school and go, "Well, we should build a building here, this would be great," and...
Yeah, so we, and we also looked at neighborhoods, and we got ideas for windows, landscaping. We got it all.
Oh, I could put that in my yard, yeah, we had, we had fun.
I moved to adjourn.
I second it.
We do have some numbers.
We're trying to get happy for nine.
We do have some numbers.
My part's short.
We don't care.
No.
Just you wait, our slack, just you wait. Here's the, here's the deal. Altogether, our, the goal of Walking Spree was for the district to walk 250 million steps. When I first saw it, I thought it was 250,000, I figured I could do this, we could do this. Then I read closer, those arrows really add up. As a board, we walked 1,870,990 steps. And what a, yes, thank you. And, and we ranged as far as the winners, or not, I'm a winner, even though, from number 73, Ms. Barter, you were number 73 in the district, to Ms. Yelsey, you were 180.
Yes.
I was 239, which I was pretty jazzed.
Oh, come on.
And Mrs. Flor was 278. So we're all under 300, so that's excellent. I have no idea what we qualified for, they let us know, the bottom line was the district walked as a whole.
You get a plaque that's...
I qualified for the fact that I'm, my personal goal was to walk more than 6,000 steps when I walked, and we had days of over 10, so that's good. And to selfishly say, "I'm doing this because I get to walk Washington DC with my youngest granddaughter." And last time, I was at the end of every line, and I just refuse to be at the end this year, so I'm preparing.
We're not finished yet, we're walking every school.
That's right, we have, Mrs. Flor and I have currently walked 24 of the 35 district sites. We were gonna walk tomorrow, but it's raining, oh darn. We walk sometimes with other board members, we walk sometimes with the principals, but we decided personally, we're not gonna stop, we're still gonna keep going. We've given ourselves till winter break. Now, we thought we could do it by the end of November, but there's rain, so we have to wait, and... Ms. Anderson, Friday, we're walking from Estancia to Whittier, to Victoria, to Wilson. So, if you wanna join us on any part of it, let us know, we'll text, just text us and say, "Where are you?" And we'll let you know. Because, yeah, because, and, just so you know how hard Mrs. Flor and I have walked, sometimes we've walked to a restaurant, had breakfast, and then kept walking and come back.
Hotcakes is real good.
Sometimes our goal was, if we walk all the way around, then let's walk Killibor. We walked with the principal for half of the time that we walked, then we walked IHOP, then we walked back to Killibor.
But see, I...
But we still walked, we still got steps.
No, but do I have to measure the steps?
Can you move to adjourn?
Absolutely. Okay, with that, I wanted to end on a positive note, I move for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
In memory.
Oh, 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 I move to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Linda Snene, a fabulous woman, an excellent parent, a wonderful wife, and a dedicated devoted school board member.
And volunteer.
And volunteer extraordinaire. Now.
Second.
Mrs. Snell seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, we're out before noon.
Yay.